A meeting of order for the Southfield Council and Dr. Lee for June 10, 2013. Thanks to all of all.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Frack?
Here.
Mr. Liam?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Ms. Seymour?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Ms. Seiler?
Here.
If some members present.
We're not going to have microphones today?
Okay. Um, no, we can have microphones.
You don't hear it?
Not here.
I don't know. You don't have, I don't know, employees, so we can't have microphones. Yeah.
I mean, your phone is not.
Sure, my earphone is not.
Whatever it takes. I'm like a wood.
Okay. For approximately two years now, um, Mrs. Lee Dong has been approaching various people in the city Southfield about forming a sister city relationship with a yet-to-be-named city in Korea. And so, um, this has been in the mayor's office, I think it went to legislative committee. Anyhow, we're bringing this tonight for the whole council. And, um, Ms. Dong, I'll, uh, floor is yours.
Thank you.
Uh, and if you state your name and address for the record, and please use the microphone.
Thank you. Uh, my name-
And if we, excuse me, we can slide that podium.
I got it. Is that okay?
Yeah, you can turn this way. Okay, so, the floor is yours then.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Lee Dong. I'm actually pharmacist and, uh, working in pharmaceutical company for twenty-five years. And, uh, I just, uh, doing my volunteer work at Korean American Center of Michigan. And, um, this, uh, project was, uh, actually initiated in, uh, 2011. So I sort of to go through with you today, uh, what is, uh, Korean American Center, uh, Cultural Center of Michigan is all about very briefly. And then I'm going to go into the sister city, uh, project that I have discussed with Korea and also Southfield, um, mayor. And, uh, also they, uh, talk about already this goal and objectives of the project, uh, as well as what we need for the next step. If you have any questions, then please, uh, stop me and ask me a question, or you can wait until the end of my presentation.
We'll wait till you at the end.
Yeah, presentation. Uh, the history of Korean American Center, uh, they were formed in, uh, nineteen sixty-five and, uh, was a nonprofit organization was formed in two thousand and two and, uh, moved into Southfield, uh, building and we made a home. Southfield is our home. Uh, Korean Center has a variety of activities, the cultural exchange programs, as well as the health promotion programs and education and counseling for our community. So we promote the quality of life of our community as well as the community at large. The service and program, uh, we provide, uh, translation, uh, for the, uh, court and any other hospital, uh, needs. And also we will, uh, we have actually Korean school, Hangul school is the Korean and the second language and, uh, English is second language. And also the, we have a lot of, uh, Korean, uh, the cultural, uh, singing and traditional singing and instrumental, uh, classes, uh, as well as, uh, we, uh, actually have very nice dance classes. Uh, currently we are holding computer classes for elderly. We have a three-school year event in Korean Center we just had in June tenth, actually yesterday, uh, Koytano Festival. And, uh, we have a food and game, uh, also have some art contest for children. And so it's actually not only for Korean community, but it's also the community at large. They can all come and compete and learn about the, uh, history of Korea and the culture of Korea and then, you know, there's some contests over there, drawing. The event board is to actually, uh, put together cross-cultural events, so everybody learn about, uh, eastern, um, kind of culture, as well as their understanding about different, uh, you know, culture and customs. We also have a Korean Traditional Arts Festival, which is, uh, run annually last year, but from now on we're going to do it bi-annually. Uh, and, uh, that is all the student and teachers who are actually taking, uh, courses and teaching at center, they're performing. Health seminars, uh, we actually, uh, put together the seminars because, uh, my background is also in pharmaceutical industry. I wanted to make sure that also our center make sure, uh, everybody is aware of the, their health and know about the information that they can prevent from getting those diseases. So especially the Asian, there's a lot of diabetes and also colon cancers and lung cancers. And so those things, uh, we actually talk about it. Also hepatitis B is also very high in Asian community. So those things, uh, because they, uh, you know, exposed before with the dirty water and things like that, especially hepatitis B. Uh, I'm going to move on to the, uh, sister city project that we talked about. Uh, when I met with the mayor first time in two thousand and eleven, uh, she kind of mentioned about the initiate, uh, the sister city project previously, but, uh, it didn't really succeed because of the way it was started. Uh, and, uh, she was very excited about the proposal I, I made and she said maybe we should move forward and see where we're going with it. So it's, it's not because not getting, you know, permit or a discussion with you, but if there's no city coming out from, uh, Korea, there's a new point for us to discuss over here. So that's the main reason. But, uh, I know also she mentioned about that there's a student exchange program in Southfield. The project in Southfield is actually doing that with Korea. Uh, this is something that, uh, Councilman Jeremy Moss communicated to me, there is some potential issue with, uh, resources and also this staff. And, uh, but the potential project issues when I see it is, is actually the Korea wants to have a formal relationship with the city. So I think that is the one I want you to keep in mind when I give a presentation. Uh, progress of the project, uh, it's a long list, but I'll just make it, uh, short here. Initially, uh, because without knowing each city's, uh, goals and objective, you know, what you want to do, it's actually is a new point to have actually sister city. So what I did is initially, uh, met with, uh, mayor and his assistant, Marty Williams, and talked about the, uh, there's a potentially, uh, whether they are interested in. So they talk about the business interest and any other interests that the city has. And so I contacted various, various people from here in Korea and who actually had experience with the sister city and sister school project. So I, uh, got to actually connect with, uh, Dongji Province's government's office. And, uh, they actually disseminate the information to all the cities within the province. And, uh, we actually identified one, uh, Dongducheon city because they really wanted to, uh, have a sister city, a relationship with, uh, Southfield. Because their population, uh, is ninety-eight thousand and, uh, you know, over here is about seventy-eight, uh, without counting the date, like, you know, the, uh, population coming in. So it's a very similar and the interest is very similar. So I thought it was a good match. So, uh, since then, there is a lot of discussion, actually not real discussion, but information exchange from the city office and also with the Dongducheon, uh, city office to just, uh, exchange, uh, city information. And also the, they, uh, propose to come to here first and then they were, uh, they said they liked to also visit from the Southfield city to visit Korea. And then, uh, they, uh, after that, uh, if you both, uh, satisfied with the city conditions, then you can actually make a decision of the sister city, uh, you know, project and then move forward with whatever project you want to move forward with. Hi, Mayor. Can I have some water? Sure. Uh, so this is timeline. I actually put together timeline, so it was started in February two thousand and eleven and right now is June two thousand and thirteen. But, uh, it went through, uh, a lot of, I met, thank you so much. I met with the mayor three times and I also, when I went to Korea for my first night visit, I also met with them in Korea and, uh, and get their input, what they were thinking about it. And also they wanted to come to here in last year, uh, it's September, but because the city is an emergency, they couldn't come. So this year in February, they request again whether they can visit this year in September. Actually, end of August in, uh, early September. So, uh, just wanted to briefly, uh, talk with you about in this portion of this year, I just wanted to also, uh, mention to you, this can be evolved with the force of the discussion, both city can discuss it, what you really wanted to pursue. There's, uh, you know, areas of business, there's, uh, areas of culture, there is, uh, area of, uh, education. Those three are very interesting or both sides in here and over there. But what you want to do and how you're proceeded is, uh, all depends on how you want to do it. So it's, uh, actually mutual understanding and, uh, benefit both side. Those projects will move forward, but this is up to you, you know, city councils and the city, uh, mayor, uh, you decide what you want to do with the project, okay? So it's civil relationship to promote economic status, uh, well, as well as strengthening cultural relationship. But, uh, when I met with, uh, uh, mayor, it was more just, you know, economic side of it. And, uh, recently, actually, they told me, not to tell you, but, uh, they told me that the Chinese city, that they're just right now doing with the sister city. Uh, there's some people from Dongducheon, two different areas, that they actually invest their money into that city. So I, there's no guarantee and there's no, I'm not talking about this is, you know, as something would happen, but there's a lot of potential and that's possibility. So I just wanted to share that, uh, that was two days ago, they sent me an email about that. But, um, the, uh, communication technology, healthcare and automotive parts, uh, that's your Southfield, I understood, uh, you know, the main, uh, things that you'd like to, uh, move forward. So, but I also wanted to emphasize all of you, uh, as I mentioned before, in order to have a good relationship and have other project like a sister, uh, school and also business relationship, they wanted to have a formal relationship with the city, not the Korean living in the community here. We can help you and I, I, you know, dedicate to help you, but, uh, we have to really, uh, think about those things and, uh, make a decision on it. Uh, I just wanted to go through very briefly, because this is not really a city related, but once you, uh, actually establish, uh, sister city, uh, project, then go down to sister city, uh, the school and, uh, other thing is much easier because they know you now. They know the Southfield city, what Southfield is, uh, the city is all about. So they have a much better, uh, chance to have a good match for different schools. I, um, wanted to just briefly talk about the raise, uh, lottery because, uh, after I met with the mayor and, uh, excuse me, um, school superintendent, uh, the, uh, Dr. Robinson. And, uh, actually the principal of the school contacted because they're going for, uh, like a global technology and they wanted to have the program in place. But they contacted me in June, uh, eleventh and that they wanted to have the program in September eleventh. That's a very, very short period of time and they don't know, uh, over here, they don't know the Southfield city. So it's a too short time to establish, so they don't move forward. But I think, uh, if you have a good, uh, city, uh, sister, uh, city, uh, project going, uh, this kind of thing will be much easier to identify in, you know, Korea and move The outcome of the, those, uh, program, uh, should, you know, as you can read over here, that this is actually came out from, uh, the school principal, that if they have the sister city project, what kind of thing they would want to, uh, obtain and what is the outcome of the program they expected. So I capture over here, actually it's not my idea, this is, uh, I discussed with so many people, then, uh, the people that want to have from here and then willing to, you know, and, uh, wish, wish for thinking it is anyway, but, uh, it can be done and it is possible to be accomplished. Uh, I just wanted to show you, there's other programs in other cities in the United States with, uh, Korea, in many, many cities in Korea. And, uh, they all have a program like a college/university exchange program, high school, middle school, same thing. And, uh, they also visiting, students visiting Korea in, into the different school, they sit with the students, they see how their studies and understand their daily life and things like that. Uh, they, people take them for seven to fifteen days and then also any other things that you see. But a lot of video conference you can also do and, uh, you don't have to spend money to, you know, go over there to learn all that, you could do that from here as well. So according to studies, as I just mentioned to you, and it's a kind of, but Dongducheon city as a candidate, it came out and, uh, they have a very good fit. I just wanted to, kind of while you're listening, uh, pack this around. Uh, this is booklet, but if we, if you have time, there's eight minutes DVD as well, so if you don't mind, I can also show you that after my presentation will finish soon. So next step is actually a couple of things. Logistically, that, uh, Dongducheon city in Korea, they will take care of their own, uh, airplane ticket, but, uh, they, uh, Southfield city, uh, should consider providing their ground transportation and two to three days, remember, that's all needs at this point. Um, and, uh, they expect that the Dongducheon city will provide you same service when you visit Korea. Uh, and the visiting program, uh, is that, uh, would be nice if we can arrange a program to showcase Southfield and also to, uh, put together the agenda to discuss your interest. So it's, uh, what kind of project you want to move forward and for this project. Um, one of the most important part is for you, uh, I don't know I did a good job to convince you guys, but, uh, I think it's really worthwhile for Southfield to consider to move this forward because, uh, Dongducheon city is also, if you remember, army base before. Do you know that? Before that, uh, after the United States and the army, that's one of the base, Dongducheon city is. But then now that, uh, the base is divided into different places and, uh, they change so much, they actually revitalize the whole place, they're rebuilding, a lot of businessmen is moving into that area. So there's a lot of potential, uh, in that city as well as they, uh, their interest to the outside. And, uh, also they are somewhat familiar with, uh, the, the culture here, but it's not really having experience with the students or, you know, city itself. So those are also you need to really think through. But anyway, the, uh, they're really waiting, uh, almost two months now to, uh, from us to hear about when they can come and visit you, uh, city. So, uh, right now is there's a full possibility because they gave us the date, August twenty-seven through the, uh, the September sixth, but because of the Labor Day is right there, I just put it the three days, two nights and three days. So I just put those four, uh, possibility as they're, you know, so you can actually, I'm really hoping, uh, you can tell, uh, in here, you can make a decision whether you think it's a good idea to move forward and if we do, then, uh, you know, make a decision when you want him to come over. Thank you. And that was my presentation. And if you can put in the DVD just for the Dongducheon city, so they can feel forward if it is alright, it's in English, uh, too. Thank you so much for giving me opportunity to come and talk, but, uh, this is first time I ever presented front of a city council, so I, I hope I did okay job for, uh, and convinced you to consider it. Thank you.
Dongducheon offers different pleasures each season. Now it will transform into an attractive tourism city that welcomes everyone. First, we will concentrate on the privately funded Mount Huangbang Natural Forest Project and the Green Tourism Sea Park Project and lay the foundation for Dongducheon's future as an international MTV city by promoting the Mount Huangbang MTV National Challenge held at the end of August every year to an international competition. Also, we will reconstruct the roads and parking lots and expand the camping grounds and outdoor concert hall for Mount Soyo, a quickly rising destination attracting one million visitors a year for one-day picnics from the metropolis. By completing livestock grandtown, we will contribute to developing Mount Soyo into a tourism landmark and revitalize the regional economy. In Hapongdong and its vicinity, we will build the multi-purpose Haangdeum for firefighting purposes and of course to further develop our unique tourism and leisure infrastructure. New Dream Dongducheon realizes the dream of an ideal future city with a revitalized local economy and secure and abundant lives of local people. Along with the Dongducheon Special Act, we will promote the eighteen agendas through the Dongducheon Development TFT of the Prime Minister's Office and constantly work with the central government to develop alternative plans along the way. Also, we will look for realistic plans to develop public lands, support balanced development of old towns and new towns by supporting the traditional marketplaces and construct a competitive, eco-friendly agricultural and livestock infrastructure. In particular, we will build a fifteen-hundred megawatt combined cycle tower generator by twenty-fourteen and a New Dream Fashion Support Center by the Science Tower to generate eighteen hundred jobs. By doing so, we will do our best to build a good city for doing business. We'll also improve metropolitan traffic networks by completing the Kuri Dongducheon Expressway, the bypass for Nashville Expressway number three and Local Way number thirty-nine for better accessibility. New Dream Dongducheon is the frontier of a future city with low carbon and green growth with a pleasant living environment where nature and ecology and development and preservation We'll complete the Shincheon Natural River Restoration Project with the Shincheon Restoration Master Plan, including a bicycle path greenway project for six point five kilometers and constantly promote deodorization and water quality improvement project using a useful microorganism known as EM. We'll also preserve a healthy and green natural environment where the local people can enjoy themselves by creating greenery under the subway, providing urban forests, improving hiking trails and protecting citizen parks and forests. Education is an investment for a future of hope. New Dream Dongducheon will be reborn as a city of arrival instead of a city of departure with distinguished educational features. Dongducheon is the new rising city of premium education reporting more than ninety percent college acceptance. We will improve the quality of educational environment and infrastructure for example by providing free eco-friendly meals for all elementary school students. We'll further develop existing Hanbuk University and build the Korea Baptist Theological University Seminary scheduled to open in twenty thirteen and the University for P. Dongducheon Campus for the retrieved public land in Wonsan-do to nurture globally competitive universities. Also, we will lay the foundation for a distinguished city of lifelong learning with the personalized learning programs of the Atunbound Cultural Center and a municipal library that's open all year. We'll improve the quality of local culture and arts and promote local sports events. New Dream Dongducheon is a city of happiness and hope with righteous and clean administration and services and care facilities. We'll improve the human resources and systems to provide administration services that bring laughter and convenience to the people. Through specialized welfare services, we will eliminate discomfort, pain and inflation and provide specialized care to disabled, women, seniors and children. Leaving that the key to oppressive service is friendly service and prompt customer service, we will realize open administration and personalized administration for meeting in every citizen of Dongducheon. We'll also build a trustworthy public society by creating a workplace that is humane and Moreover, we will close the Dongducheon Police Station Construction Project in Haegeon and build a healthy and revitalized local economy by providing various specialized and primary public health and medical services. Dongducheon has laid a foundation for everyone's dream. The dream will come true. New Dream Dongducheon.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. Thanks for that.
Did you have some questions?
Yeah, um, Mr. Ross?
Um, I know there's a great presentation. It's good to formally meet you after a few email exchanges back and forth. Um, but I refreshed the group of how we got here. It came before the legislative committee a request to do a sister city and we made the determination and the decision that, um, rather than us being the driving force or the, the funder of these types of requests, we would want an outside organization, for example, the DONG and, and the Korean Cultural Center, to come up with a good itinerary and a good series of events that they can prevent, uh, present to the city and we can sign it on a board and, and kind of, you know, participate throughout the week. So I'd say the presentation is definitely a good start, but I think it has a little bit more to go in terms of if we should decide, you know, we want to go forward with this in terms of dates. You know, I think we would have spent city staff time or city staff dollars coming up with the program, we would probably sign on to the program once it's presented in full to the city. And I think you can even make this kind of a, a celebration in the greater, uh, Korean community here in terms of raising funds for it. I, I don't think we would, uh, provide funding, uh, for, for their visit, but I think you could seek donors. Um, we might, you know, consider City of Southfield partners with, you know, the Korean Cultural Center to hold fundraisers, but I, 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 I think this, uh, it, I think it needs a little bit of a tighter package, but I think tonight you're just looking for, you have a green light to go ahead. Um, and I, I would be okay with supporting it as long as when it comes back, it has a good itinerary for the dates, um, and potential donors that could support their visit.
Yeah, Ross?
Yeah. As, um, Ms. Ryan said, we've had newest conversations. And those of you who participate in the, um, National League of Cities and I who participate in the US Council of Mayor, there's always a strong push for cities to form sister cities. Um, my initial interest, as she said, was for the economic development because we have so many international companies here, I think it's a good fit. They have a strong auto- They have a strong automotive, and so there were some natural matches. I understand and really support the relationship of sister cities. Find those cities that are sophisticated enough to nurture a sister city relationship because when we looked at their video, there's a lot of matching things that they're doing in their city that we're doing. I like the fact they wanted to become an entry city and not an exit city. That's something we want. We want people to want to move here, their interest in education and healthcare and all those things. I just came back from Turkey. You know, I've been to Saudi Arabia, I've been to Japan. You are international travel. Ms. Jordan has been all over to these different countries. And the different cultures, there's so many things that can advance and raise your level of sophistication and also welcoming people to your community that comes out of a sister city relationship. We have a foundation laid here. One of the things that is normal is the relationship that she's asking for is that whoever's visiting pays for their airline, and you are the host. And we have enough of Korean companies and individuals that we could, if we're truly serious about this, that we could seek donors, and if we receive them, we would have to have a budget that we can do that. But there is a lot of citizens, including exposing our children in our communities, other cultures. We talk about art in our, mostly two cities exchange art. You know, there could be a Korean, um, Dongducheon, my favorite city.
Dongducheon.
Dongducheon. Could have a garden here. That's common where they would place a garden, some native vegetation or planting, and a piece of art is dedicated, and we would plant one or do one in their city for South Hill. But I've seen some tremendous relationships, not only that, but nurturing the conversation about economic development. So it's up to the city, and that's why, you know, I embraced it and I advised her that she needed to come to the council. It was recommended, go to the legislative, and now it's before this body to make the decision. Thank you.
Ms. Lam, then Mr. Lam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But I want to preface this by saying that I have many Asian friends, I have Korean friends that go back to middle school, very close friends, almost like sisters. And I believe in cultural exchange. I think it's important that, you know, the world needs that people get to know each other. I don't think the United States and Korea have an adversarial relationship because we have many family relationships and much help from our families or Korean families have. So I think that's established. My biggest question is, do we need a more sister city relationship to attract business here? We have so many Asian businesses, Japanese, Koreans, and we are known as an automotive technical community, and I don't see that having a sister city improves our ability to attract automotive, technical people, according to companies because we have the history to go on. We are known as an automotive supplier city, and more and more people have been coming in to our city in that arena. So I guess my concern, my concern is not the relationship, my concern is the cost and the cost of our staff being involved in things when we're right now so low, you know, we're such reduced staff, we're losing staff, we don't have, we have to build up our financial, our tax base really. So to be involved in these kind of activities, the only person that's really kind of forced to travel to the country is our mayor. We can't do this, and we know we don't have a budget to do that, and nor do I think we have the time to do it. But, and I don't mean to sound negative, I really don't, because I think what she's done here is beautiful, it's cheering her passion, but I think the burden upon our city is something that we just, I don't think it would be helpful for it, and I honestly don't think we can afford it.
I just want to clarify something. Every trip that I've been invited by the government, the government pays the total costs and the city do not pay a dime.
Well, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying.
I just want to make that clear.
Right, okay.
Ms. Lam.
Eight, ten years ago, when I first met the Korean Cultural Center, of course, they consisted, many doctors and professional medical people, they made a suggestion to me that they would like to work with our schools and examine the kids, pre-examinations and screenings and all that. The first thing that we have to do, get started again, is to educate our schools about the cultures of other countries before we go and have them visit the schools. The Korean doctors offered screening for campusship and everything, they were turned down. Some of the nonprofit organizations also turned them down. But we have to educate our people. We can say yes, but when the program starts and they go to the schools, it's a debacle. So we have to educate our schools first that we have a sister city, and they are good people, they are cultural people, and they have to accept it. At that time, they didn't accept it. So our job is to educate our own schools first before we start programs with our schools.
Sir, the US Council person, which is, sir. Oh, okay.
Well, I was just going to say, in terms of a sister city, and this is no reflection on this position at all, but if we want to do business with it, really do business with the city, why aren't we looking at something closer like Canada where we actually could do business with these people, I mean, attract them? I just think this is so unlikely to help us because we are known as an automotive supplier city, and I don't see the advantage of it, I see it costing us.
Can you tell me a little bit more what is it done for, is known for?
I don't quite get it. In the video, it was a lot of, we're going to, we're going to build this and develop this. What exactly are you known for now as a city?
Yeah, up to this point, they, as I mentioned to you before, their US Army base was located in Dongducheon, and they are moving, they moved actually about ten years ago. So last ten years, they've been building up with, they have actually about sixty-five, seventy percent is the Maokki. If you see in the beginning when you look at it, Dongducheon City is located in the middle and there's a lot of Maokki surrounding it, and they are only, also hour away from Seoul, so an hour and a half. So it's very much a lot of people from South Korea, that's the capital city, and they move out there to, actually, they start a lot of business right now. So known at this point is, isn't, you know, I don't know they're in the automobile, automotive industry or healthcare, but they are, they are actually educate, right now establishing education and also the healthcare, the medical field quite a bit in the last ten years. They recruit a lot of non-people from Korea and also overseas, and they're actually establishing that, and they like to also have a more touristic kind of city also. At this point, they are actually establishing for that, but business is very spread out, it's a variety of business. But, yeah. But I didn't want to give all the presentation about the Dongducheon city itself because when they come, they need to discuss with you and a little bit more about what they're doing, what they're trying to do, and so on, and you can find more about it. I think what I'm saying is, of course, to visit, like, you know, whether so many people can go to Korea or not, I don't know how many people they're going to come, maybe maximum six people, but they come here to actually discuss with you face-to-face meeting and talk about whether there's a, you know, a good, I mean, this is a starting point. I think you're already thinking about, you know, down the road, and of course, you have to think about five to ten years down the road, you know, where are we going to be? But I think a lot of positive aspects of the being, you know, relationship you build with them is actually very great. And also, when you're talking about why we are going for Canada, can I just mention a little bit about that, if you don't mind? If you know about the Chinese and Korean cultures and even Japanese, do you heard about the guanxi? Guanxi means it's a relationship. It's a relationship is so important, that's from Kung Fu Ju. And a relationship can get you to a lot of different places that you don't even dream of. And so a lot of people, they go to China, they fail to get, establish their business just because they don't have their guanxi. If you have their guanxi, then they are, those are like a almost thread comes, you know, from the sweater, it's like a very smooth, it's a keep coming up, but if you don't have that, you just don't know where to go. You just, you invest a lot of money, you put your effort, and it don't go anywhere. I say that because I also work with the Chinese, this went out in business, I have a CFO, I work with the Chinese business people, and without their guanxi, you don't go anywhere. So a lot of people, actually, were Korean people, they found play there, so they could not, you know, get anywhere. It is very important. What I'm saying is, if you have an official relationship, that means that they are officially, because they are always very formal, so they are officially telling you that this is a really good place for you to actually go visit and do something. And I think those things maybe is more than what you think in generous sense, so I just want to point that out to you.
I wasn't talking about you going to Canada, I was talking about us.
No, no, I understand that. No, no, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
No, I'm just trying to get a feel of the city. There are tons of the mileage, the square miles, how big is this city?
Um, I don't remember, but I have. They were able to put together this, let, we should be showing this, you can finish this in the audience.
So the household population.
Their yearly budget is two hundred thirty million.
This would be good information, I think, for the entire council to know.
That information was actually sent to the mayor's office, so.
This is the first time I've ever just.
I just copied for mayor to see it, but I asked them for another copy so I can bring to you guys to show you.
Okay, I'll look back. I see, I see the advantage of establishing a sister city, but I'm wondering, before we sign on the dotted line, if we need to have a face-to-face discussion with the officials that will be coming? Because I agree that we really need to know exactly what we're getting into before we enter the relationship. I think we need to have the boundaries of the city established first before we invite the people. That's my own preference. I do agree that we have limited resources, and if your cultural center raised the money to bring, you know, to bring what the other costs, I would like to see the city just probably come to the mayor's office to give assistance to a project to work on, you know, securing the funding and working directly with the, with the cultural center because we just don't, to put through this project outside with my team at the mayor's office. But I think, if you're glad to begin with, I think we need more discussion before we actually, I mean, with the, with the, but thank you for your.
Ms. Perkong.
Yeah, I was just going to, first of all, it was a nice presentation, I enjoyed it. You know, we've had the Secretary of Health from Russia here partnering with Pavlov's Hospital in the past, and their library, the Sister City Korea Japan, and believe it or not, we have Badma Island as our sister city.
That's almost canon.
That's, that's secret, you're willing. But I'm more concerned about a lasting relationship, and there's a lot, there's a lot to that. I think that it's very healthy for our young people as well as our business community to become aware of the culture, the education, and whatever other things that spin off of that. And using the example, my grandchildren went to France for an entire year, four of them to school, and they come back just stunned because of the way they were in school, how disciplined it was, and how they sat at lunchtime with a tablecloth and a cloth napkin that they had to take home every day to wash, to bring to school the next day, so they had this cloth table, napkin. And I think the kids are better because they'll experience this than not. I mean, not having, you know, all the amenities that we have here in this country, a wash machine, a television in every room and all this, I mean, they didn't even have a television for an entire year, that was killing them. But that's, you know, that's what's so interesting about, you know, us learning different cultures and, and I don't know how to formulate it so that it becomes lasting and becomes on a regular basis that we have exchanges and set up an agenda of, on each exchange, you know, what is to be accomplished and what could we learn from each other. I mean, I think that is great timing. I think right now with the economy here and mission, I think it's just, you know, plays on our minds as we even go through an audit this evening, that there's some serious financial situations, both at the state level and local levels, and it's so far removed from our agenda to look at another project at this time, and we don't have the staff to do it. But I'd love to do it, I just don't know how to get it done, how to get it started. Like the library, for example, you know, that was going strong, we had exchanges, and all of a sudden, you know, it just went downhill, and a lot of board members in the library don't even know we have a sister city. And that's wrong, if we're going to have it, you know what I mean? Take an international festival, a concert, you can see the different kinds of entertainment and culture and how they live and how they dress, but there's so many things that we have to learn about other countries. Think here in the United States, we kind of like this, and it's totally wrong. You know, my parents weren't born here, they went from Italy, they went from Poland, and so, you know, I get that culture from those various countries, and you're raised with your grandparents in those cultures, and it sure has hurt to know what the other countries are doing, or how they're behaving, what they're doing, so. I just think the timing isn't right. I would like to go to, at a low scale, kind of look at it and see if we could put some kind of a timeline on it to make it happen. But I really can't see it just jumping into it at this time, although I think it's a great, great program, but I just don't, now, as we go through figures tonight, you know, we just, we'll find out, you know, our situation here, and it's, you know, you have priorities. Matter of fact, part of our council meeting tonight will be priorities of what we're going to get done with the money that we have. So I'd like to have, I'd like to have some time to think through it, with my colleagues maybe think through it, maybe the legislative. maybe think through it, maybe the legislative committee, let's see, maybe start at a small scale and invite, you know, maybe get the chamber commerce involved and invite the dignitaries from Korea here. I mean, what, three days and two nights, that doesn't mean, we put up two guys in, in natural island, you don't pay that much money.
Yeah, actually, that's also the Dongtukchun City was suggesting, because right now, when they went to China, they went like a whole cultural team, and fifty people they went. I told them in the beginning, with a small group, come here in a face-to-face meeting and talk about it. So actually, exactly what you're saying is what was conveyed to them, and also the, I'm in the Southfield side, actually, I'm not, I, I'm just helping over here, so I, I giving my time to you guys to, to make sure, because I feel that this relationship, I feel like giving you some positive outcome, whether it's gonna be a long-term or short-term, that we don't know. But like you said, the flow of the program and the continuous, continuity of the program is very important. If you do just one day and, you know, have a nice ceremony, that's not what you want.
Not to interrupt you, but like Lawrence Tech, they've started an international program there, and so it's, it's not that difficult, I don't think, to get a partnership going, it's just time and involving staff to outline it and get it moving, and right now, I just can't see that happening unless a committee gets it rolling and, and something like that. I would like, I'd really welcome to have, have them come here and visit Southfield. I think it would be very good for us to have that exchange. And, but I think if, I don't want, and I think I'm hearing it at the table, we don't want to be committed to it. Okay, then I think that if we're gonna do it, you're gonna have to commit totally, and that's the only way it works.
Next, and Mr. Fraser, then Ms. Seymour, then Mr. Lance, then Mr. Lawrence.
Yes, a sister city concept is pretty intriguing to me, but frankly, I, I don't really know how it works, my, you know, I'm, I'm not that, I don't have that much imagination to see how it really works, because almost anything, I think, can work. The thing that is a hurdle for me is, for me to be involved in a sister city program or project or event has to be more than a city council. It has to expand into the city. We could, we could have a sister city in name only, but I think that would be wasting our time, it would be wasting the Korean city's time, just to have fifteen people involved in it. And it has to be something that you start out with baby steps, and, and it grows, and keeps bringing different parts of the community in. And, and that's the part that I'm having a, a difficult time. Is it a social kind of a relationship, or is it a business kind of a relationship? Is it a combination of both? And we've, we've been asked by a number of, of cities around the world to be sister cities to them, and I don't think there's any rubber stamp package that makes it work for all, because each, each one has a characteristic of its own, and a culture of its own. And when I was heading here, and the mayor was talking about gardens, one of the things that went through my mind is, I think it would be pretty neat that here in Southfield to start out, we plant Korean-type vegetables, or Korean-type garden, to grow, you know, see what gardens the Korean families have. And in a reverse, we send seeds and, and things to Korea and have them grow an American-type garden, and then maybe exchange recipes and, and things to at least open the door. But I think my friend, Mr. Fercassi, has hit the nail on the head. What we need to do is bring maybe an entourage of people, a small, small group of people, sit down and talk about the possibilities, and see what is possible from the Korean perspective, and we see what's possible from our perspective. I just don't want to waste anybody's time and money and then have them come here and, and find out that we aren't, we haven't done our homework, so that we don't have anything to offer as a sister city. So I just wanna make sure that it's an equal exchange between, between two countries if we get involved.
Ms. Seymour?
Thank you. That was a beautiful presentation, really, really, it was absolutely. I'm sure that, I mean, what I've seen, there was just so much that this community, you know, to offer. You make, you make us look, I know it's like, a little, um, almost, I'm, you know, we haven't, like, we haven't done that, but it's, it's a very showy piece, and it's very, I, as I said before, I think cultural exchanges are always unofficial, I really do. I come from a family with many backgrounds within my family, many cultures, so I've been exposed to a lot, and I don't think there's anything by having a cultural exchange. But my interest is, because of the economic situation that we're in, is how is this gonna help our business community? How is it, I've gotta see something tangible, because we, we have this prior base here, and it's almost a prior base, and we have a cultural interest, I'm sure you're familiar with that, but it's, without seeing something tangible, it's just like a nice thing to do, and it's a cultural exchange, and we don't have the staff or the money right now to just, to, to do that to them.
If, if I could, there is an organization, which is International Sister Cities, and I could have, if this council wants, they come in and teach and educate cities on the benefit of a sister city. It, it educates you, and I thought that you all from the National League of Cities had been educated on this, so I apologize, that probably shouldn't came first.
I would vote for you.
Just like Councilman Fraser said, there's all kinds of requests that have come to my office, from Africa, from Mexico. The council of Mexico came to my office just two weeks ago, asking us to do a sister city network. You know we already have that request, that delegation has come here, and they want us to be a sister city with them. We have had visits that I have made, it's always a request for a sister city, but maybe if, if this council would allow it, because there is not, you invest what you want, it's not this set price, I hear you saying you're concerned about it, but maybe if we would educate and bring this organization in, and they can, because Calhoun Zoo, Ann Arbor has a tremendous amount. Now, this, we have an international campus right here in our town with Lawrence Tech. Do you know they have more international students now than they have American students? And so we have these international companies that are based here, so there is, there's an obvious reason why we're getting all these requests, and we have none that we're after them. So this, if, and I'm asking this question to the council, and through the chair, there's an opportunity to bring someone in, and we can appreciate this, because the things you're asking her, it's not the answer she's gonna have, she's presenting the request and the city that would like to be a sister city with them. But we're talking about who's gonna handle it, how much money it's gonna cost, I don't want the cities involved. You create, every city creates a relationship they want. I personally like that kind of development, and you heard that magic word, in Asian countries, it's about the relationship. And once you show you know how to do a relationship in Asia with a company, it spreads, and then people feel comfortable from that country coming to talk to you, you already have the blank slate. So that's, that's my request, I would like to put on the table.
Mr. Lance?
I'm gonna say something where everybody is gonna be surprised, and everybody's honest. Eight months ago, I was drafted to serve on a committee with Koreans, the Korean Committee, in reference to the Second World War, when Japan invaded Korea and kidnapped a hundred thousand women for comfort for soldiers. It's called Comfort Women. So there's a committee in the Oakland University, the Oakland Advisory Committee, which I was appointed to, and I serve on that now, and one of the projects is to memorialize the Comfort Women from the Second World War. A statue was made and ready to be put up, and my doctor, who was a Korean, drafted me and told me about it, and I, he asked me, where can we put this statue? So I said, without hesitating, the Southfield Public Library, culture, culture, culture. So the committee of the Korean Committee came, I made an appointment to the library board, once, twice, three times, and they turned us down. No culture, no education, they turned us down, we were disappointed. Now, I'll tell you why they turned us down. Dave, you had wanted it, you thought it was the best thing out, the best thing that we could do to give our people culture. Anyway, the Japanese general counsel and the big boys from Denso visited the library board here in Southfield, and invited them to dinner, they didn't go, but other people went. And they brought, and they, I don't wanna mention the word bribes, they, they promised contributions to the, to the city of Southfield if they do not take the sculpture in Southfield. And they turned it down, you didn't know all this, you didn't know the work I'm doing. You don't know the work, well, I'm doing. We're so disappointed, and the Korean community was disappointed, they made every excuse not to accept the sculpture. And it was all ready to go, it was coming in from, from Korea, the Japanese businessmen came in and stopped it, and the library accepted it. The same sculpture is in New York, a lot of states, and it would have been a, I don't know how to, the word, to be placed here in Southfield, in our library, for everybody to see sculpture of the Korean Comfort Women. And we talk about the sister city, I'm all for it. I'm not gonna make excuses, there's no money, there's no nothing, we can manage it. Culture has to be taught, that's why I said we have to educate our people before, remember? I said it in a few words, Mr. Fraser said it in a lot of words. I don't know what to tell you. I will help you personally, okay? I think the council should attempt to help you, and say yes, if you're ready, if they say yes. You like the story I just told you?
Southfield.
At this time, I'd like, we've been asked this an hour, I'd like to suggest, first of all, Mayor, I'd like to put this back to you, and I think we all know enough about what sister cities are, how can we make this one work? And it seems to me we need an advisory group that would include members of the, we have a Korean church here, we have a Korean cultural center, we have Korean businesses.
I'll introduce you to the Korean Committee, okay?
Why couldn't we get some of these folks to do the sponsoring, so that it doesn't become a city's expense or a staff, staff time? We need a budget, we need to know, what are we gonna do for two days? I mean, for instance, I would be happy to take people on a, on a drive around the city because it was too fast, but, you know, we're, obviously, there're going to be meals, hotels, whatever else. So we, we need a budget. This, this August or September is just, just too early, we're not there yet, as you can see from this discussion, but it's a great idea. You know, Mr. Lance, you'd be interested to know that because when Ms. Don went to First Letterly and, and they said, yes, we wanna do it, and we're ready to do it, so instead they went to Japan, a whole class of kids flew to Japan for First Letterly School, and did an exchange last year. The schools are interested in it, they make kids go all over, all over the place. So I think the school part is, is a natural, but building a relationship, I agree with Mr. Fraser, it takes time. So I would suggest we have the mayor appoint an exploratory committee on how we can make this happen, and get it out from this body, and bring, bring it back to us, how, how we can feasibly make this happen.
But you need to educate the people, be on our committee.
I agree. We, there has to be a sense of this, that, and one. It should not, I, I do not want to invest the time and the energy of my staff, my department, and the council come back and say, we don't want anyone.
Well, with the suggestion I've just made, is to support for the mayor to form an exploratory committee, and, and work on a budget, and actually the content of what this exchange would entail, as far as hosting a group of people from Donju, okay? Ms. George?
I would say yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes. I'd say yes, but I mean, I, what I was gonna say is also include the Southfield Community Foundation, Southfield Chamber of Commerce, so that, you know, we're not just.
No, no, too many.
Too many? Well, you know, I think it's worth reaching out.
That's what the mayor, when she picks a committee.
Yeah, but I, you know, it, it just, we need a finer, fine-tuned package before council. I'm, I give a green light, you know, completely for this, but we just need something better to understand what it's gonna be.
Ms. Seymour?
I, I have to say no, I, you know, surprise me, but I have to, I have to say no based on what I heard.
All right, Mr. Lance, just that, and Mr. Fraser?
Yes, the mayor, the conference the mayor started, sister cities, and they have an entire package, and you can ask them a sense of package, and they have a package.
All right, Mayor, you have your, your report that you're looking for, Louis Ford, to carry that in.
Before we, before we leave, thank you, but before we leave, just know that you also have that request from Mexico, and, and the body is gonna have to make a decision on that.
So, sorry that I didn't realize, I dropped you, talking, but if you, this, this time, if you can, maybe the mayor with, with like, you know, I can work with one of you for.
With the mayor?
Yeah, with the mayor, the mayor's office for the thing, but is that, that means the mayor can decide, they can actually come?
No.
Or no? We, it's actually, it's not gonna, then, maybe, actually, because this was postponed from last September to this April, and this is again, this is our, was, they may, they may get as you're not interested anymore. So I, I, I used to actually also understand different culture, because this been for a while, you know, so it's a third movement, and they really want to get this time whether we want them to come. Very small group, I'm not talking about big groups. The only thing is, here is really needed, I'm not trying to make it as simple, but if you need the help with the meals, I will make sure that the Korean community, they can provide, but if you say you can maybe provide the ground transportation and a hotel, that's all they need, because they're two days and three days, so that's, you know, and then we will put together with, working with the mayor, the topic that you want to discuss, and we can actually discuss that. topic that you want to discuss, and we can actually discuss that, and you can get some more information out. But this meeting was very, very beneficial to Southfield, because, you know-
Ms. Don, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt here.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna let the mayor work this out. We are sorry that this has been postponed, but this is the first time it's come to council. Okay? So I don't want to offend anybody in Donjichin, but this is, this is our first discussion on this. Since it hasn't, we're putting it back with the mayor to work, to work out something. That's our best offer as a, as a break now. Hopefully, we can make something happen, and we'll have to adjust the time a little. And you can extend our apologies to the folks in Korea, but it's just not worked out as fast as people like, or certainly, we don't want to be discourteous, but this is where we're at. Mayor?
Can we communicate that we, we are interested in a visit?
Yes.
We just can't commit to this night date.
Right.
So if we can communicate that the council has given their approval to start the dialogue, we just aren't committing to a date right now, but we are interested. So if we can communicate that and our apologies, because our government needs to vote, and they have to understand that it's going to be a problem.
Yeah, actually, that would be, what I hope was it been, Mary, because official communication from the city mayor's office is more important, because I'm just helping Southfield and, you know, the coordination of that. So I think it would be good for my way to communicate.
Is any part of it, with this new company, is any part of that expense for us to pay, like the hotel?
That's what I'm gonna provide, she can't-
Oh, okay.
Let me do the question.
I thought you said we would have to do that.
But we really have to move on. We have seven other items on the agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Don.
Okay, you know, one, one thing that, more than that, to understand, how many Sister Cities could we support? That is, you know, one to every country around the world comes to the Southfield, you know, that makes us very busy.
That's my concern, that's still on. We need to move on to item number two, preliminary city center two overlay development district.
Thank you, President Cyberg. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The project before you this evening is a presentation before this project actually comes before you at next Monday's meeting, ultimately for council's decision. This particular project is City Center Two. Mr. Hassan Jawad owns a particular piece of property that currently is right down the street south of us here, Jimmie Johns in it, along with the King Cave Mediterranean Grill. What the proposal is, is for a multifaceted project here with regard to a vacation request, a rezoning request, as well as a, as a site plan. With regard to the vacation request itself, the petitioner is proposing to vacate a 60-foot wide by 200-foot deep section of Jeanette Street, that is just east of Evergreen Road, so the section from Evergreen Road, 200 feet east of Jeanette Street itself. The petitioner is looking to garner or get that vacation request in order to continue to develop further to the north, and he owns the, the shopping center from south, and he's also looking to develop the property which was the old People State Bank property directly north of it. The vacation of the street itself, there are a number of facilities within that particular street, so we would continue to hold on to easements for that should there be any maintenance that would be needed for an sanitary, the storm, or the water line that is currently within that street. The second portion of the vacation is the, is the rezoning request. Currently, the property itself, both OS Office Service and P V vehicle parking, added on to that, they would like to also include houses, two houses that are within the RA single, single-family residential district. The current City Center One project is B one zoning, and then he would also look to add additional residential properties, RA single-family residential to that as well. The overall development is looked to rezone to B two, which is planned business on the People State Bank property, and then make the rear portions or the east portions of that property as well as east of the existing City Center One project to P vehicle parking. The entire properties then, all of those properties, including City Center One, would then be under a, the overlay development district, which council approved a few months back. That would begin cover all the properties that would be within this particular or under this particular development. Included with that would be an overlay development district agreement. That would be an agreement that would be reviewed by our city attorney and then signed by the mayor and the city clerk. So that agreement would deal with a number of issues, including use, setbacks, parking requirements, landscaping, basically all the aspects of this particular development would be under that particular agreement. The site plan itself, we call for a 23,400 gross square foot malt mixed-use two-story building. First floor would be retail restaurant, while the second floor could be all office, could be a mix of office and residential, or could be all residential development. Part of that site plan includes additional outside space for outside dining, a number of patios, including a possibility of using the roof for rooftop terrace. Also included are aspects for art, as well as bike paths or bike routes, bike racks, additional amenities for benches, as well as tractor septacles along Evergreen Road itself. The proposal, if you look to the, what would be your far left, is a building that is kind of more up to date, a little more modern building, a little different than what the existing building is with its kind of red brick color, but it is more up to date and a little more modern building. With that, if I may, going back to the vacation request, one of the issues that came out of not only the meetings with the, with the residents, but at the planning commission as well, was with regard to the actual vacation request being enclosed in the street. What is being proposed is to allow emergency access. Emergency vehicles could still come from Evergreen Road, travel Jeanette Street over what's being termed as a speed table. It's basically a 23-foot wide by, or 31-foot by 23-foot mounded, we call speed tables, about six inches high. It would demark the location between the existing or the proposed development and then the street itself. Both our police department and fire department looked at that. That particular height of six inches does still allow them, for their vehicles, to, to go over the top of that particular speed table and access Jeanette Street should there be any kind of an emergency. So again, we're not closing the street, we are looking to provide limited access for emergency vehicles, which again, was one of the major concerns that the, that the residents had in that area. With that, Mr. Jawad is here, and I would like to invite him to at least come in and explain this project a little further.
Good evening, Mr. Jawad, your business address for the record?
Hassan Jawad, 26595 Evergreen Road, Southfield, Michigan, 48076. Good evening, members of council, Madam Mayor, members of staff. I just wanna touch upon a few items relative to our project. I don't want to be too long-winded about it, but we've, from the very beginning, we have worked with staff as well as the neighborhood to, to get to the point that we are tonight. I know this isn't the first time that council has seen the project, I've spoken to a number of you on an individual basis as well, and we feel that we've done a very good job up until now to take in everybody's input, including the neighborhood, council, staff, as well as the surrounding stakeholders in regards to the, the end product that you're looking at tonight. We're excited, we think the timing is good. We feel that this is a, a good first step for our ODD. We feel that it will be a trigger mechanism for additional development in the area of similar and like developments that will be mixed use. We're excited to be the first to prevent such a, present such a, a development for the City Center District. We feel that with the up and coming improvements to Evergreen Road, that we feel our project is in line with what is in store for Evergreen Road. We think that it complements the up and coming roundabouts, the traffic calming, the landscape overpart, the new traffic patterns, and ultimately improving safety into the neighborhoods. With the meetings with the neighborhood, one of the things that did come up as, as a concern was the amount of cut-through traffic that currently occurs in the neighborhoods. And with the vacation of Jeanette and the implementation of the speed table, we feel that this would definitely be an improvement from a safety standpoint as well. We're looking to improve pedestrian pathways and amenities, and again, we think that this is the, the first piece towards creating our version of a downtown with first mixed-use development. A couple key features of our development as well is some of the items that were on our wish list is we did want mixed use, we wanted two-story, we wanted a drive-through, we wanted to create a gathering place, so we incorporated nearly 15-foot sidewalks in front of every establishment in our development, so that we could actually not only have dedicated patios, which we do have at the site, but to also allow the various tenants to have seating in front of, in front of each individual establishment outside as well. And pretty much, we're here to, we're here to answer any of the questions and, and hopefully clarify anything that needs to be clarified before we, we meet on the 17th.
I have a question from the Seymour or a comment?
Oh, I have a bunch of comments and questions. First of all, by closing off Jeanette, which is why you're saying that that would reduce the cut-through traffic, all it's gonna do is push it over to Golden or to Hilton. It's really not going to, I mean, it won't be able to push it off Jeanette somewhat into other streets. All the cut-through traffic, a lot of it comes from out of school, people coming to from the school, and I know they complain about it, but it's neighbor, it's local traffic, it's not from the other side of Southfield Road. It's all local traffic that's using this area. So I'm, I'm really not in favor of closing off Jeanette Street, and I told Mr. Jawad this some time ago, because I was wanting to talk to him, and there's parking in the front, is that what you're talking about sidewalk, or is that just parking? Does this mean what sidewalk?
In the front of each of the tennis spaces, there is actually a 14 and a half-foot sidewalk that is directly outside the door of each tennis court.
They're showing, they're showing on the map, right here.
Oh, that's okay.
Right here, Miss Seymour.
Okay, okay. So it's, it's length, not width. I'm also not in favor of-
No, it's, it's width.
Is it width?
It's width, it's from the door out to the parking lot, there's 14 and a half feet, with, with a portion of it covered as well.
Okay, okay. All right. But that's always my concern. I'm, I'm not in favor of closing off Jeanette Street. I'm also not in favor of the speculative office or residential. We, we have fellow space and office space, and I'm not, I don't like the idea of the residential would become rental space. I think that, I, I told all this to Mr. Jawad before, he don't hear any of the news from him, but I do have some concerns about that.
May I address those, those couple points? In discussions with the neighborhood, as well as a number of the neighbors who have come out, the majority of the cut-through traffic that we're getting is actually from our own development of people who are pulling out of the various restaurants and then cutting down the street. So there's no reason, or the majority of the traffic would not have an opportunity to make its way towards Billmore and, and the other, and the other streets. But the majority of the traffic that is currently coming through, as discussed in our prior meetings with the, the neighborhood and the residents, is from our own, is from our own development and not necessarily the schools in Seymour. In regards to the vacation of Jeanette, I'm sorry, in regards to the, the second story and, and the use, it's your prerogative to whether you're in favor of office or residential. I will say this, our plans, from a speculative standpoint, we do say demand will dictate what the use will be, but our intentions is, my primary business is, is the IT business, and we actually intend to occupy 25% of the second story once it's complete, and so it will not be vacant nor will it be speculative, it will actually be occupied.
Mr. Lance, you have?
We could pass on the site plan committee, and we were not told half of what they did tell us, what is set here, we didn't know, but it's okay, I'm all for this. I had concerns about the opening, about Jeanette Street, and it was answered. I asked you the width, before you didn't know it, now I wanna know the width by the way.
It's 31 feet, Mr. Lance.
Okay, now-
So, a truck requires 20 feet.
But you didn't tell us that it was elevated 10 inches, that's the site plan committee, so.
That's, if I, if I may, you have speed bumps that slow traffic down. This is a speed table.
How high those speed?
Six inches roughly, and the road's curved, the fire department said they don't, they didn't want it any higher than six inches.
Well, about how much off the front?
This, this will roll right over it, but a passenger vehicle, that will cause some bottoming out, and therefore that will limit passenger vehicles from cutting through illegally. It's also in, in response to the neighborhood, who didn't want a wall across there, so that pedestrians can still walk across. And we, we integrated also a T turnaround, in the event someone's coming down to the end of the street and they realize they can't get through.
Wait, on, on Evergreen?
No, on, on Mr. Jawad's property, there's a proper T turnaround. Should someone come down to the end of the street, they, without having to pull into somebody's driveway, so there's a double redundancy built in, just in case. Now during an emergency, police and fire can get through there, as well as dump trucks or plows, should the need arise. So it's been designed as a limited access, as opposed to a complete closure. The wall effect, the neighborhood didn't want, and this will help with, with traffic calming, as well as providing emergency vehicles. That's why it's a limited access.
And anybody drives through there?
Not passenger vehicles. That would be limited, just like you've done on Edward Street, you've limited to one-way.
Just for fire and police.
It's fire and police.
Okay.
And, and because of the grid pattern, because of Red River and multiple streets there, there are multiple access points to Jeanette Street. And if and when Evergreen Road gets developed, the traffic patterns will change with the medium. People won't be making that left turn in and out like they do today. So the whole traffic patterns are gonna change in that area, and we feel that this is a good solution, and we work closely with the fire marshal and the police department to come up with a solution that's in response to the neighborhood's concerns.
Okay, but there are no obstacles on either side?
No, it'll be enforced with a no-through traffic, just like we do in other areas, and the police can ticket if they see somebody go through.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Another person from council, Mr. Lawson, that Jordan, and it's Seymour.
Yeah, no, I, I've seen the iterations of this plan-
Yeah, no, I've seen the iterations of this plan as it's come before council. Personally, I thought we already kind of were moving forward with this, I didn't know it had to come back for another step, but I think it's great. And Mr. Jawad has proven that he has the ability to fill buildings within Southfield with tenants that can stay, that are utilized. I think, you know, I want you to discuss some of the property to the south. I think it's the number one Just Bake, the number one Jimmy John's, the number one, you know, everything there is tapped and jammed, and, and, you know, this isn't just a rental that's just going to stay and struggle. So, I, I'm excited for what happens there. I think of me and my, my friend Mr. Ficassi were talking about hopefully a bagger day or whoever's going to come there, and we're going to grab a burger and a beer one night. So, I, yeah, or, well, the guy Culver's going elsewhere. So, you know, this is, this is excitement, and I'm duly impressed by your ability to go within the community and the residents and tell them every step of the way, what's going to happen, what's the expectation, so that it really is, we're not going to, I hope we don't have a public hearing that lasts so long time, next, next time it comes before council, but you will absolutely get my support on this, and I hope to see some things there that I'm going to utilize.
Thank you.
I'd like to see what can follow.
Okay, sure.
I do, I do want to say in regards to tenant selection and so forth, we do have numerous letter of intent for the space. We intend to be as selective as we were with our tenant selection and mix of tenants as we were with our first development. We are not accepting anyone and everyone, and we want to make sure that it complements not only our development, but complements the development across the street. We're not looking for redundancy. We're looking to mix things up, and as many years as I've been out here, I still look for somewhere to eat, no matter how many restaurants are still on Evergreen Road, I'd still, I'd still like a mix of tenant and service selection.
Mr. Jordan?
I, I'm with the development of the building, Center Center Building Two, but I do have some concern about the vacation request, because the current existing retail businesses that you have there, they're already generating a significant amount of traffic. And to close Jeanette Street off from the traffic exiting to Evergreen, I think that is a backlog. But that's what my concern is, is the current build, the current businesses that you have there, and you even mentioned it, they're doing very well, because you've got a lot of cars, you've got a lot of traffic, and now you're closing off an area for those cars to get out of the danger of this business. So, I'm just not in favor of the vacation request. I am in favor of the development. You've done a great job there, but I'm not in favor of closing off Jeanette.
I have to clarify, it is from Mr. Jordan. We're turning two different vacations, so are you in favor of along the rear, or just not from the front?
Neither, I think this has to keep it open, so the traffic, actually, both of these buildings are...
You came down there now, because you come out of these parking lots, it's no right turn or no left turn, so you came down right now.
I might need to say that.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, just to Mrs. Jordan's point, one of the things that was designed, as you recall, is that properties to the rear have been acquired for additional parking in one-way traffic in each direction, so the flow will be to Hilton and to Golden, and then back on to Evergreen. So, there is a recognition that there wasn't enough parking, and we've built in the additional parking here to the rear to accommodate the additional needs. With the street vacation, there's additional parking that is picked up as well. So, you've got the flow in two directions, going one way to the north and one way to the south, and you've got additional parking here with the street vacation. The other thing I wanted to mention, one of the challenges Mr. Jawad has is, should this get approved by council next week? The construction period for the shell of the building will take them through the end of the year. That's December, and then his prospective tenants would come in and have a three-month or four-month build-out, which brings us right into the spring Evergreen Road construction season. So, it's important that he gets his businesses established and their customers accustomed to coming there prior to us starting to tear up the road. Even though the road will not be completely closed at any one time, that's one of his challenges, is to make sure that this thing moves forward in a timely manner so that he can attract the type of tenants that we've been talking about.
Okay. Mr. Seymour, then, Mr. Fraser.
Yeah, I don't have any concern about what's going on the main floor. I know that you are going to pick tenants for that retail tenant, that's going to be retail, correct?
Correct.
So, I don't have any problem with that. I mean, you have a good record with what you've done on the other locations for most of my restaurants and stuff. And, I mean, I, I said this before, I love your enthusiasm for this area. I do have a concern still about closing off Jeanette. I can see where the parking is leaning back, and I, the school traffic is basically on Golden, and there are people on Golden that do complain about the cut through traffic, but it's heavily school traffic.
Billmore, which is another street.
Right, right, Billmore. But I'm in that area a lot, because I go to Jimmy John's and I go to the other restaurant under a couple times a week, I go there a lot. And all the traffic I see goes out to green, to Evergreen. So, I'm just having a trouble accepting when people are complaining about extra traffic, and I don't think that can solve the problem. I don't like, I don't like the Jeanette Street thing, and I'm concerned about the speculative office or residential, I hope that you will, mostly residential part.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes. If you may, I may put your chair just for a moment. I just want to reiterate, you know, we keep saying that we're closing the street. With the meeting with regard with the residents themselves, their main concern there was that by closing, actually putting a physical barrier across that street, that emergency vehicles couldn't get there, we'd take them longer, that was a major concern. So, we're not closing the street, the vacation request, yes, but we're providing access for emergency vehicles, which was the main concern the residents had, of getting emergency vehicles up and down that street. We are providing that access. Yes, we have the speed table there, but we are allowing emergency access, so in essence, we are not closing the road, it is remaining open.
But you're not closing the street, but you're limiting the traffic that can exit out of the business on to Evergreen.
No, not Evergreen.
No, I mean, all, even with the existing structure and existing development as it is, those pulling out of that particular development were forbidden from making a right-hand turn if you're going out of north, or forbidden to make a left-hand turn going out of the south portion. That was a directive, and that was a condition of that site plan approval, that no one was allowed to make a turn to go into the residential development. They always had to go to Evergreen Road, so nothing has changed.
Access to Evergreen will still remain open, yes.
Even in the vacation part?
Even in the vacation part.
Okay.
If you, if you say to Fraser...
That's my question. Well, the only thing is...
The driveway was purposely, it was closed in their initial concept, and we purposely had them put the driveway back in so that there'd be access to Evergreen.
So, that's open?
Yeah, it's open. It is open.
They said they can't use it.
No, what we're trying to clarify is that they can't go eastward on Jeanette, but you can go westward onto Evergreen. It was, it was closing the traffic to cut through, through the Jeanette.
Can residential go, can they come through here and go bottom out, go bottom out, right? Because of the...
Right. One thing I'd like to add that's very unique about our neighborhood that is sometimes overlooked, is these neighborhoods do not have sidewalks. So, pedestrians walking in the neighborhoods are actually walking in the streets, so this is a definite safety improvement to prevent traffic from cutting through the neighborhood. There are basketball rims that are sitting in the middle of the street if you go down Jeanette. I've been out here enough years to know what the traffic patterns are like, and there are kids in the street, and by doing this, we will definitely improve the safety for the neighborhood, because there are no, there are no sidewalks, and people walk in the streets, and traffic and pedestrians don't work, so...
Mr. Fraser, anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say that I like this, I like this development, and unfortunately, I spent too much money in the ones that are already there, so I'm sure that you're going to entice me to spend more money in the new ones too, so, but, no, you have some good businesses in the current, your current buildings, and I, you're going to get my support for this too. And my, my concern was whether or not people could come out of your development onto Evergreen, and you solved that, so, thanks.
All right, Mr. Lawson?
No, no, I wanted to clarify the exit thing, but I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Ficassi?
Yeah, I'm just going to mention to council, this has been before the city center boards many times, and it, if you can correct, if I'm wrong, it has the full support of the city center board, they think it's fantastic, and they just think good things are going to happen when we get some new development in the area.
I'd like to add that I'm very much in favor of this. I'm a big proponent, you've heard me say it over and over, of mixed use. This is it. We should have people living above retail, I mean, there are people that want that, it's another, it's another lifestyle choice. It's a shame that we zoned it out in so many cities, but it's happening all over, so, good. Turn to Southfield.
I, I may not prefer to live over retail, but there are those out there that do, and we have, and we have to, as a council and as a city, look at what's for the greater good of the city as a whole, as opposed to our personal preferences, and that's what we're trying to do here with this development, is appeal to the masses.
If I, if I could, just, we have thirty-five thousand housing units, half about owner-occupied, half rental. This is a very small niche, it's probably six to ten units at most. The other thing is that this would not be possible had the council not adopted the overlay development district. And what you'll see in your packets is the actual agreement, it spells out all these conditions, so that council has ultimate control and approval on these nuances of this development, which is unique only to this development. So, that, that gives the council some extra protection.
We, we approve the ODD for developments like this, and to not support it in its entirety would be, would be second guessing results and going back on what we intend to do.
I think we're getting a point of overkill.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to echo that I, this is exactly what we want, to be a progressive city that, in a city that's over fifty years old and finally uses, and what we approve of overlay district, this is exactly, and I'm excited about it. Thank you.
You made a lot of humble people up there.
I'm going to go around and just get a consensus tonight that we're in support, this will be on next Monday's agenda, Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, with reservation.
Mr. Ficassi?
Yes.
All right, get a roll. All right, we need to move on, I think we have a lot ahead of us. All right, we have Mr. Sharet, the Continuation Services for Geographic Information Services.
Yes, we have a fine-tuned mix of our employees and outside professional services, and this is one of the leading examples. The city's GIS system has made notable accomplishments over the last several years, the council is aware. We have some news about some recognition we have just received about, about our program, and an integral part of our success has been the outside services provided by the Geographic Information Systems, Inc. of Farming Fiddle, Michigan. This arrangement allows us to have access to over a hundred and fifty system professionals in locations throughout the country to address problems that might arise, or if any type of complex operation were needed assistance, as well as onsite assistance day-to-day. Our current vendor was chosen three years ago through an exhaustive selection process involving purchasing Public Works Engineering Planning and Technology Services. They have agreed to hold their current fee flat, but this would be the fourth year of holding it at the figure of not exceeding a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, with a two percent increase in two thousand fourteen fifty, and then that figure to be held flat for year three. These are favorable terms for this particular service due to skill levels involved and a strong market for GIS systems specialists. So, recommending a three-year continuation of these services, and we have with us Ms. Sally Price, our GIS coordinator, and she has with her a guest from the GIS company that will give us some highlights of current services provided, and some future plans, and short order.
Short order.
Good evening, Ms. Frank.
Good evening, council, thank you for having me. As Mr. Sharet says, that we're looking for a three-year contract with geographic information systems, with me I have John Seagull, who is their general manager for state and local government. So, we've done some great things, as you've seen, we were able to use some of the boards tonight that planning uses GIS for. GIS gives us the ability for staff and residents to utilize this service. We can help our residents, if someone calls into the city and they give someone a statement, they can help them with engineering information, building information, because it's all right there on their system, on their desktop. So, it really helps us as we've spent a little bit more short staffed over the years here to utilize a lot more of the system. I do want to quickly read an email real quick that I received on May third, and I was really excited about this. It says that it's my distinct pleasure to inform you that the city of Southfield, Michigan, has been selected to receive a special achievement in GIS, SAG Award, at the two thousand and thirteen Esri International User Conference. This award is given to user sites around the world to recognize outstanding work with GIS technology, and our organization stood out for more than a hundred thousand others. So, I was really excited about that, that's our first award, and it's been a decade since I've been working with the council. Because without council, we wouldn't have a GIS, so, and I want to recommend that, and it's been supported, and I appreciate that.
Is there any question? This goes on the consent agenda.
Yes, we're looking for...
This is my favorite, it's going to be on seventeen.
Okay, Mr. Lamp?
Yes, yes, yes. I want to ask a question.
We got seven yeses, so, consent agenda, Mr. Fraser has a question.
What kind of things are on GIS? And I'm going to ask you a specific question.
Okay.
Let's say our fire chief wants to know where all the fire hydrants are in the city?
We have all of our fire hydrants GPS located.
Do they?
Yes, they're very accurate.
And numbered.
And laser village.
Yes, and we have laser village.
Okay, what other kind of things are on GIS that...
All of our water mains, all of our storm system, all of our sanitary system combined, manholes, we have all our topography information, contours, elevations, got to get a picture of layers.
Planning, zoning.
Yeah, school districts, planning information, we probably have over a hundred layers of information.
Okay, good, I just...
Yeah, and we maintain that a big part of the services, you know, we have programming, like a lot of what our consultant does is behind the scenes. With the programming information, we have custom applications, but we have databases we maintain, we changed our database from Oracle to SQL. A huge part of GIS has been keeping up with this technology, because it changes. We'll develop something and within two to three years, oh, you have programming languages, sorry, you have programming languages, so you have C plus plus, you've heard of that, Java, Python, and they continually change. So, that's something we have to keep up with, and that's one of the reasons we won our award, because we do keep up with technology, and we put the latest and greatest stuff out there.
So, if a new fire hydrant goes in, who puts that in the system?
We do, I do. We have an analyst on-site.
Want to know how one got built on a sidewalk?
Well, I do build it, I'm an engineer, I don't know, I don't know who the site plan is, I get them as an ad built.
That wasn't the tech system, that was human error.
Yeah, that can happen.
Thank you.
Any other question?
We appreciate the enthusiasm and the creativity.
Thank you.
Yeah, how quick is the turnaround? So, let's say we approve of a development here on council, and it starts construction, how soon do you get that plan and be able to put it on?
I need it as an ad built, because we want it as it was built, as we know it was put out in the field, because if we put it in like it's proposed, it may not be built like that. So, I have to wait for the developer to do an ad build, get it to the engineering department, and then they get it.
Okay, great.
Mr. Seymour?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Sally, she's, I mean, she's amazing, technical. dream, and she's done, she's a fabulous woman, hasn't she?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
She's, she's one of the behind-the-scenes people that does remarkable work and should be recognized. But I think so it's no...
I just wanted to add that this is a resource that the planning department uses on a daily basis, the engineer department. When customers come in, either at the desk or they ask questions, we, uh, we access the GIS system. It gives us a lot of information, so it's not, it's not just for certain types of departments. Everybody has access and uses it.
Yeah, we're...
And it's a great resource.
So, anyhow, we're good for next Monday.
All right, I'll see you then. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We're gonna go on to the audit review with Mr. Sharet.
Yes, uh, again, another example of a fine-tuned mix of our employees and outside professional services. Uh, we have people here from Plant Moran, this is Alicia Davis, who is the in charge person in our audit, along with Les Holver, who is a managing partner of Plant Moran. And, uh, we would like to accomplish two things, again, in short order. One would be to provide the overview of the financials from the last fiscal year, uh, because we're preparing to start an audit in a couple of months of our existing, or this year, uh, ending in June twenty thirteen. Um, the, this material was over, was viewed in very deep fashion by our finance committee uh, in, on May twenty-third. Uh, actually, it was a whole being, it was, uh, it was a little bit of five hours, there were many items on the agenda, but this was one of the most important. And, uh, there was a unanimous, uh, two unanimous recommendations from the finance committee, and of course, we have members of the committee here at the table and, uh, they can corroborate immediate disinformation. Uh, but the two decisions were, number one, that it would be beneficial for the entire council to have a presentation, which is an summary overview of the in-depth that we did on the twenty-third, and also that we are recommending that the current auditors, Plant and Moran, be re-upped for the next three years for the following reasons. Number one, uh, it is a professional service, but we do not automatically re-up any. Uh, we do a market analysis and we also do an analysis of the type of work that's been done and whether these people have performed to a high level and, uh, and become part of the success of the city. And I will tell you, the Plant and Moran has done an excellent job. They are, they are part of the team that's gonna get us through the challenges that we are facing and that we have faced, and they've been an integral part of the financial planning aspect of our city and our success in weather and the storm. Uh, with that, uh, we would like to get into the presentation unless, um, maybe councilmen are asking like that a few words as chair of the finance committee.
Just to add, Mr. Sharet, we, the three of us looked at this thoroughly invested presentation and the results and, uh, and through the committee, we have suggested that this go before the entire council so that they have the benefit of this audit.
Thank you, sir. Name and business address on the record.
Sure. Uh, my name is Les Holver, partner with Plant and Moran, and we're located at three seven four hundred, Drive, Western Highway, uh, in Southfield. And with me is Alicia Davis, one of our managers that helps with the audit. Um, as I mentioned, you know, it's been gone over in great detail with the finance committee, um, but, but the committee suggested sharing it with all of you very briefly. Alicia passed out this spiral-bound document, PowerPoint presentation, that really summarizes all of our deliverables and, and we'll try to go over it, you know, in, in short order here. Um, on the first page there, we, we just talked about the deliverables. Um, we have, the main deliverable of an audit is our auditor's report letter on the city's CAPR. And when I use acronyms, I'll try to explain them. CAPR is the city's comprehensive annual financial report, CAPR. Uh, it's a hundred and eighty pages long. Two pages of a hundred and eighty would be Plant and Moran's report on the city's CAPR. Uh, this product is all produced by the city, uh, the city staff. Uh, it really is the result of all of the hard work from all throughout the year summarized at the end of the year into, uh, the, uh, city's comprehensive annual financial report. In addition, we have a letter addressed to the mayor and city council summarizing the results of our audit. Uh, we have a single audit report, single audit report, that would be the, also called the federal compliance audit. Because you get federal grants, uh, we have to audit not just the financial numbers, but your compliance with all the federal laws, regulations, and all of the different contracts and the grants that you have. Uh, that single audit report has a report on internal control over, uh, financial reporting, compliance requirements, a schedule of expenditures of federal awards, where we literally list all your federal grants, notes, and then the schedule of finding and question costs. Uh, in our, uh, letter, uh, we talk about the fact that we've done our audit of the CAPR in accordance with what's called GAGA, generally accepted government auditing standards. We express opinion on the fairness of the financial statement. Our opinion is an unqualified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance you can get from your auditors. Uh, when we say unqualified, sometimes that's confusing, doesn't mean that it doesn't qualify, it means it's without qualifications. There's no exceptions. Uh, like you say, it's the best you can get. And it takes two pages to say it, uh, because it uses all the technical jargon, but basically it says that the financial statements are complete, that they're accurate, and that they're prepared in accordance with the established accounting rules. Uh, so, that's our job. Uh, so, we express opinion on the fairness of the statements. Uh, obviously, we, we remind you that we have to do it within economic limits, in a reasonable length of time, and at a reasonable cost. So, we use a wide variety of sampling techniques and confirmation with outside third parties. We talk to your attorneys. We get information directly from the state of Michigan. We get information from the Oakville County Equalization Department, and so on. But the result is, it's reasonable, it's not absolute assurance. To get absolute assurance, we have to recreate every single transaction from throughout the year. Uh, on page four, we indicate that we performed the audit in accordance with the plans called, previously communicated to you in our presentation with the finance committee back in September. Uh, the importance of that is that had we not been able to, it would indicate that we ran into some issues that took us a little bit longer. The only item that we did, did run into is that certain financial statement items, we couldn't quite get until, you know, right till the end of December. We finished our audit, uh, really in early January, and then that federal compliance audit, or called the single audit, uh, was delivered in March, when we had originally anticipated we would deliver that, uh, at the end of December with the county, with the city's CAPR. Um, although it was filed ever so slightly late in early January, uh, there were no consequences to the city, because, uh, by the time the state would have said, well, gee, the audit's a little bit late, before they really had to take any actions or sanctions, the city had filed it and, and, you know, really beat the state of Michigan to the punch in terms of any consequence. So, uh, just a little bit late in terms of having everything come together, which I think, as Alicia's gonna point out, uh, in, in light of some of the financial challenges you've had, uh, and obviously, the hiring freeze you've had for more than the last five years, um, you know, you're doing all the same work and actually more with fewer people, and it's a challenge to get it, to get it all done. Uh, on page five, uh, again, what we're doing now is we have to recite all the things that we told you in September and then close the loop on them. Uh, there were no transactions which lacked authoritative guidance. In other words, governmental accounting has a well-established set of rules. You're familiar with the famous audit failures of Enron. They were involved in transactions that were very creative and did not have a set of rules. So, they were kinda making them up as they went along. There are no transactions in the wrong period. Um, on page six, we mentioned counting estimates. Everything is not necessarily based on, uh, writing a check or to pay an invoice or a cash receipt. Uh, certain things require estimation, and so we just have to let you know what those significant estimates are. So, workers' comp, a lot of times you don't know about those things until years later. Um, and other kinds of insurance, property tax appeals, uh, we, we work with the city treasurer and, and your legal counsel, Ms. Hallahan, to get estimates of what the property tax appeals are gonna result in. Retiree healthcare, uh, and then there's one alternative investment held by the fire and policeman retirement system that requires some extra judgment, because everything is not black and white. Um, difficulties, uh, like you said, we really didn't run into any difficulties, except for filing a little bit late, for which there was no consequence. Um, on page eight, we summarize, and we have Alicia summarize just briefly the kinds of adjustments that we made when we wrapped up the audit.
Thank you, Les, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, if you had a chance to look at the single audit report, and you do have a chance to get into that, you'll see at the back, we are required at length to kinda spell out any findings, corrections, or anything like that that may result from our audit procedures. Um, what we've done here is just in summary form, uh, notified you of any corrections that we would have made in order to get your financial statement materially correct. And so, these are the nature of things, where we would have come in and said, you know, this should be accounting a little bit differently, or you might have missed this near-year-end adjustments, et cetera. These are all the things that we worked with the accounting department to correct, to make sure the financial statements were materially stated at the end of two thousand and twelve. I am on page eight of the PowerPoint. We went through these at length in our meeting with the finance committee. I wasn't gonna go through them in detail, certainly unless the full body wanted me to or you had specific questions on, on any of the particular items noted there.
Mr. President, what's gonna be your format? Do we wait till the end or...
Yeah, let's wait till we got...
Okay. Shall we continue then? Okay. Um, on page nine, we are required to tell you if we did have any disagreements with management. Um, we did not have any disagreements with management in working through the audit. You know, Mr. Sharet always gets to chuckle out of that one, because certainly we do have some spirited debates at times, but nothing that we are unable to get to resolve on, that's how we do our audit.
We all...
No unresolved disagreements, how's that? On page ten, and we are also required to notify you that we do obtain certain representations from management, which basically is just stating that everything that we have received at the start of our audit is factual, accurate, nothing's been withheld, et cetera. And so, we did in fact obtain that with no issue. On page eleven, as well, we are not aware of management consulting with other auditors, or opinion shopping, as we call it in the industry.
Or, otherwise, there would have been disagreements.
There we go. We may not have been able to resolve them. Okay, so that's that. Um, on page twelve, and then the last part that we're required to just touch on is, hey, is there anything else that's on any of these categories that we tell you, auditors, to speak on that, you know, the governing body should be made aware of? And we would say, no, there are no other audit findings or issues that we haven't already made you aware of. What we do on page thirteen then is we, um, we summarize the audit findings, and so this would reflect any findings that we have, both on the audit of the financial statements and then also in our audit of the federal awards, if they matured. Um, and I guess if I could start with the single audit, I could probably summarize those a little bit easier, so I'll start there. Um, more than half of the issues that we would have noted in detail in that report that I mentioned previously would relate to the schedule, the CIFA that we audit not being correct. And so, a lot of that boiled down to, hey, you know, department X received a grant and the finance was not aware of it, so it wasn't reported correctly, or a department received a grant for a hundred dollars, finance thought it was two hundred, so it was a hundred dollar variance. There was just a lot of disconnect between what was going on with the departments and their records of the grant activity and what was getting communicated to and reported by accounting. So, that really accounts for more than half of the issues. And so, we worked with the two departments to make sure we get everything accurately reflected.
Can you, can you get into what we've done?
Yes, I, I, I'm happy to report that as of today, and maybe about a month ago or so, um, there was a communication that went out by Mr. Sharet, which did immediately change the policy around awarding, um, actually, I think even seeking before you're awarded grants, getting awards, and communicating with finance. As of now, no department can in fact even seek or be awarded a grant without having communication and approval from the finance department to ensure that this doesn't happen going forward. It was one of our recommendations, and we were really happy to see that that communication, that policy change did go out very shortly after our audit. Um, beyond that, there are, uh, there was a couple of things with CDPG related to like the shift budget and some of the financial reporting that have also been rectified as of today, um, and just a couple of minor other things. But on the single audit side, I would say that was the big item. Um, on the financial statement side of things, we do have a couple of recurring themes, um, many of which can be attributed to staffing, staffing constraints, but I know that it continues to be a challenge for you all. There are details in the report. Again, I don't know in this form how much we want to go into detail about some of the findings in there. Uh, I guess I would look for your direction on that.
Well, another question.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the issues are, you know, they're fairly well described, fairly well described in the report, but like Alicia mentioned, it really is a result of your staff size shrinking, where you can't separate all the duties and have ideal segregation of duties, where somebody does something, somebody else checks it, just because you don't have enough people. So, short of hiring more people, you know, you're doing the best you can, trying to have compensating controls, but because you've had staff reductions, it just makes it a big challenge.
Letter finish in a roll. Post your question in a roll. Come back.
Okay, thank you, Les. On page fourteen, there's a summary of other comments included in the letter that I actually would have put at your table today. My understanding is you may not have received that copy in advance, but, so, we have findings that we're required to include in the, in the single audit report, as I mentioned. However, we make a lot of observations, because we spend so much time here, operationally and related to internal controls, and so there's always a host of other things that we just want to approach your attention, that we feel warrant your attention, and these would be those types of items. These are not findings, these are just other things that we thought merited the attention of this body. Um, and, and so again, those are listed out there. Um, the first one, I'll mention, because there will be a resolution, I believe, coming before this board.
Right, that's the next item.
Yes, to approve, uh, a fund deficit for a couple of the funds due to some timing differences. And so, that does formally have to go before this board, get filed with the state. Um, that was just to say, make sure, you know, you do that. We talked a little bit about the dual rule. Um, some minor things about budget adjustment. Um, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about water and sewer fund and some inspection and diagnostic testing, uh, that's been done, we think that's great. Um, we encourage you to continue to do that, continue to look at making the capital improvement and, you know, reviewing your rate structure. Um, so really, a lot of just kinda operational, um, observations that are spelled out at length in the letter, which I would have came up.
Another reason we moved up the water project, section thirty-one, that council approved that the last, or gave consensus at the last CLW, and it'll be on the seventeenth, um, of June, with the water and sewer, uh, fund is in good shape, and we need to, we need to get moving on the capital, capital side.
So, Alicia, the things on page fourteen are all in this letter that we received tonight.
Yep, exactly.
More detail.
Yep. The next area, Alicia's gonna go over some of the financial aspects that are shown in the city's CAPR. But before that, I, I just would like to say, it really, overall, all things considered, has been a, a pretty darn good audit and a pretty good result. The, the city, despite some of these numbers, when you see the numbers that Alicia's gonna show you in terms of how much your property tax and your state revenue sharing have...
to show you in terms of how much your property tax and your state revenue sharing have dropped, to be able to just hold your own is a tremendous accomplishment. This year, the city's general fund added four million dollars to the fund balance in light of, in spite of all that, those challenges. So, you've really got a lot of really hardworking people here who have pulled the line, you have less people, people retired, your duties just get redistributed, and that's maybe some of the reason that things were ever so slightly late. But they're doing more work and they're spread really thin. And overall, like you say, the financial results have been good despite the challenges that Alicia's going to kind of demonstrate to you.
Okay, so, again, as Mr. Schratt mentioned, you're kind of wrapping up your 2012-13 year, so just briefly touch on the results from, the financial results from fiscal 2012, starting on page sixteen. And really, the key thing to me as I look at page sixteen is when you see in 2011 where you had that significant drop in revenue, clearly, that was directly attributable to the property tax value decline. You got overwhelming support from your residents with the millage that passed in May of 2011, and that really restored your revenue level for 2012. The other observation I'll make here is, you know, when you look at 2012, I kind of refer to it as kind of restoring revenue because it still doesn't even get you to where you were at your peak here in 2008. You know, so that was, that was a huge deal for the city to be able to continue to balance the budget and offer the services that you do to get that millage passed. So, that's really the key message there. On page seventeen, you know, Lass had alluded to the taxable value trend data that's included in our presentation. And we know that you guys are looking at this data and talking about this all the time as you're setting your budget and doing your long, your long range planning. But this really tells your story very visibly in my mind. Here on page seventeen, so it would have been your budget nine, ten year when you first saw your first reduction of taxable value because of the like there, you know, the assessment happens in one year, followed by the levy date, followed by the budget year that it actually hit. And then, boy, you just got hit harder, and then you got hit again, and then, you know, you've kind of been in this double digits. And so, when we think of where you're at, kind of as of the end of the budget year that you're in now, you would actually see an actual reduction of your tax base of forty percent, which is huge, as you know. However, the results really aren't finalized and are still coming in for the next couple of years. And so, what the city assessor and city management had done is that in the last two years, we kind of got some asterisks there, also provided for additional reserves in the thirteen year and then also in fourteen, uh, thirteen, excuse me, twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, an additional five percent. So, we're at forty percent reduction. Management, your assessor would be projecting out up to possibly fifty percent after all the assessment valuation data comes in. Obviously, very, very significant numbers that we're talking about. And, you know, if we were to look ahead one year, which is not really reflected here, we'd be looking at the twelve, thirty-one, two thousand and thirteen assessment date. And in my mind, that's going to really be kind of a key, some key data to come forward to the city because I think, as we all know, the housing market is really starting to rebound. I know personally, because I've been looking for help for the past year, and I put six or seven offers in at the city of Southfield. All that we're at are above asking price and I got outbid. So, great news, you know.
Sorry, where you have it.
Yes, yes. That's what I kept saying, I had mixed emotions. But, you know, great news for the city of Southfield in terms of your residential market. But obviously, in terms of your large commercial base, we're not really sure that you bottomed out yet or that, you know, you're completely on the uptrend there. So, it'll be, and then there's the conversation about personal property taxes and what that would do to the tax base. So, it'll be really interesting to see kind of on a net basis where you're at with the assessment data at twelve, thirty-one, thirteen. I think that's really kind of set the stage to where you're at going forward in terms of your budgeting and long range planning and, you know. So, that's going to be a key, a key timing here.
Property taxes is not your only revenue, but it's your largest revenue. And imagine personally, if we would have personally suffered a forty percent reduction in our pay, how hard it would have been to balance our homeowner's budget? That's what the cities had to do with a forty percent reduction in your taxable value. And again, that's not your only revenue, but it's your largest revenue.
I think you're preaching to the choir.
Yeah. Yeah, we know. We're going to beat up with this pretty guy.
Yeah.
Page eighteen is just a representation of a typical community that's not resolved for the city of Southfield. And really, we started putting this together several years ago, and there was a lot of talk about structural deficits and everyone just a big hit, and so, really, so, everyone was upside down on their budgets. Revenues were way above, or expenditures were way above where revenues were. And even at the city of Southfield, when I think of your two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven year, that's where you were. I mean, the general fund took a seven million dollar hit in that year. And so, and so, when I look at this and I think of the city of Southfield, I really think, you know, Jesus, it's a really good thing you made some changes and kind of continued to contract your expenses, you got the millage passed, you had, you had the staff reductions so that you didn't end up looking like this. You kind of flipped, you know, the structural deficit situation for yourself, and now you are back at a place where revenues are in fact keeping your expenditures. But certainly, without those changes, this is really where you'd be. Page nineteen just shows the multi-year trend there of statehood revenue. We talked about property tax being by, you know, by far the largest revenue source. Statehood revenue would be the second largest in the general fund. And, you know, over a matter of, you know, ten, eleven years, that would have been reduced by three point four or three point million or thirty-six percent. Again, we're talking significant dollars in terms of reduction to your operating budget. Page twenty, also on the general fund, shows the multi-year trend of expenditures. Couple of key things there I'll point out. In 2012, you can see that you're continuing to reduce your budget, getting that down to stay in line with where your revenues are, or even be under where your revenues are so that you can start to restore some of your fund balance and rebuild that. So, that's excellent. And then, and then the other thing is you see kind of a big maroon bar there, you know, that's your public safety. So, talk about revenue being a large, or property taxes being the most significant revenue source, certainly, public safety would be by far the largest expenditure that you have in terms of departments. Page twenty-one there, just kind of showing revenue and expenditures together. We've already talked about, you know, what happened in 2011 there. And then in 2012, as Lass mentioned, you were able to have really positive results and add four million to your general fund.
Which we funded, now we funded our reserves or appeals, okay, at a cautious level. And we also have the fund balance a little bit, which will come up.
Correct. So, then on page, on page twenty-two, this really shows where you're at at the end of the year in terms of your unassigned fund balance and how that compares to your annual operating budget. The unassigned fund balance would be a portion of your fund balance that's really left to you at your discretion. There are, there's significantly more fund balance than at the end of fiscal twelve, but some of it's restricted, some of it's earmarked for tax appeals and other things. And so, this is sort of what's left to be used at your discretion. Still a lot lower than where you would have been in 2008, but you can see the uptick there from 2010 and eleven. And then, on page twenty-three, you know, we just, we just want to highlight some of the things that, you know, the city has done in light of the challenges and then, and some of them that you've been forced to do as a result of the changing times in local government. And so, we talked about the reduction of FTEs through attrition. That's really significant, two twenty-five positions or twenty-five percent of the workforce in the layoff. Reconfiguration, streamlining of positions, your pension plans are well-funded, continuing to develop and modify your long-range plans that you had in terms of reactivity. We've talked about the millage and then also some restructuring of healthcare through less of the burden. So, a lot of things that have been happening here, a lot of really good things though to get to the results that you had in fiscal 2012, and certainly the results that I think you expected us to get in fiscal 2013.
All right, it's time for questions. Before we do that, Ms. Banks, let the record, it's like that Mr. Lance left the meeting in nine oh five. Ms. Mayor?
I have a couple of questions. There is a mention in the difficulty of obtaining information, and I wanted to talk to Mr. Schratt. I know it's driven by the lack of staff, and if you look at page, in my book, page eight.
You got that.
I have a physical.
We did a summary report from the prior version that we had to the pages.
Okay.
Pages may be a little different.
So, it was difficulty in calendar and performing the audit. It says during the process of long range, there were no difficulties in dealing with management other than gathering information needed for financial recording and audit testing of some of the grants and other financial activities, which delayed the audit and resulted in not a late filing, but a later one. We all know the condition they were in. But we also know that, because we went through this, where there is, the state reacts very severely when we do not file on time. And I will keep bringing this up. It's time for us to, and then we talked about the dual role of the controller and the city's, and we, we talk about this all the time, but there hasn't been any action.
And the action would be to create an exempt position of deputy in the treasurer's office. And I don't know that that's appropriate thing to do. So, we do need to research how we can solve this problem now. Because it does come up.
Well, it comes up every year. And it comes up every year, and now that payroll and everything else has been added to the same person, it's time for us to come up with a plan because we went through that from the state who labeled us because we did not file on time. And that's not a position that I want the city in. And it's time for us to look at the controllers, the treasurer's office, the payroll, that whole department, because this is going to have a major impact on the image of the city. Because I know fund deficits, I immediately start, I immediately start imagining watchless.
Not on these, but we'll get to it, though. The fund deficits are caused by the fact that we do business like a business. For example, we, we advance funding, but I, I know, I don't like the terminology either. I totally agree. That's what the state calls it, and now they make us go to council on these. But what you'll, what you'll find when we discuss them is because of how we do business here. If we simply gave, let's take the, let's, let's take the NSP program. If we simply granted or just gave an advance from the Lerd Fund to the NSP, and we didn't make it a loan or the line of credit, there wouldn't be, there would be no deficit. Okay? But because we say, no, this is business. We, we don't, we're not granting this money, we're loaning this money. Okay, that's what creates a deficit in that particular account until everything is evened out, that we're all done with the program, and then we, and then we do our final accounting, and that's where we likely land. But a lot of times, in fact, most, the other two are flow of funds. Revenues that we've got coming, okay, that are come, they come later. So, they're technical in nature. That's why we call it technical.
So, how do we not, and I'm not disagreeing with us running a government business, but how do we get to the point where we're not being requested to do a deficit reduction plan by the state because it's being listed as a deficit?
You would have to...
It's, that seems, that's the question that we need to answer because...
Well, the answer's simple. You just give the money right out. You just hand the money over to a program.
My issue is with us being listed as a deficit.
It is a problem. I agree.
Being thrown away watchless potentially.
We're not watchless.
However, if you don't do the deficit reduction plan...
You are on one.
You are on one.
Yep.
So, really, this is very, it's a very high priority in here in serious issue because that's the entitled image of that thing. We've worked too hard, we've put too much in this, you've lost too many nights of sleep for anyone to put a bad lock on us. And we know this exists, but what is our plan? And, and that's something, you know, as a mayor this day, I really want to know what we're going to do with that. So, that is the staffing issue. We can't just say we know it there. I have an issue with a person taking money in, recording the money, and not signing the check. That is no check to balance. And we are so blessed that we have an amazing employee in that position. But anyone auditing us will tell us that is not the way you do business. You're setting yourself up for a potential mishandling of money, and we cannot continue to do that. He should not want to be in that situation because if anything happens, he could be blamed. It's not a healthy position for him to be in.
Most auditors, most auditors will tell you that you need two people open head looks.
Exactly. And, and we know it exists, and we have to have a plan, and what are we going to do about it? And also, on page five of the, of our letter, it talks about our annual closing process that we kind of are running into the time issue at the end of the year and how, you know, that's another thing that I think was helping. You know, I'm saying these things because there's so, there's so many great things in this report. And we have survived a tsunami, a hurricane, tornado, whatever you want to call it. Our employees are working so hard, and we have to know that we cannot afford a bad lock on our city. So, many people are looking at us saying, oh, Southfield is going to fail, and we're not. We're showing them every day how strong, how resourceful we are, what great employees we have. And this audit gives us an opportunity to address those issues. But I don't think it's healthy for one person to collect the money, count the money, record the money, and sign the check. That is not the way that, we should not have that person in that situation. The last thing I wanted to, to, to bring up, and I would like some answers to this, and the chair will determine how we get that. Our section eight program, when you look at the number of repeats, our section eight, our community block grant money, we know there's issues. But fix them. How many times do we have to have repeat? And whoever is responsible for that department should have a plan to make sure this doesn't come up again. There should be some accountability if you're having repeat in the audit. And this is the question I do want to answer for tonight. The neighborhood stabilization program supposedly is ran by a private body, right? Is that correct, Jim?
Body.
The housing, the neighborhood stabilization program.
It's, it's run by a neighborhood, it's by a...
It's a local corporation. Which is a private separate institution.
It's appointed by, it was appointed by council members. That's right. They appointed the members to that board. They're all city employees.
I don't get minute. I don't, I get a report, I think, once a year. But any time of the department, it's just like our pension, police, and fire. If the, if the program is causing us a deficit, and we're going to have to loan its money, we should have a better handle on it. And it's just a point of concern here. And it's listed as one of our fund deficits, it was listed as one of the reporting years. And the beauty of this report is it gives us an opportunity to correct what's wrong. It doesn't say we're bad. It points out where there are potential problems. And so, I'm thinking that they are separate entity, just like the Southfield Housing Commission, that they separate the housing department that ends this time. So, that's a question I want to answer. So that's a question I want to answer. How can we better run this program? How can we make sure that this program is strong enough so that we don't have the Neighborhood Stabilization Program being granted loans? And it's coming out of our LURF fund, right?
Correct.
And we're supposed to be self-protective of the LURF fund, but we're loaning money to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
We are on a full court press on that issue. We own, that help me out here, I think it's a good plan.
You have seventeen...
We have seventeen houses that were purchased under the last phase of NSP. And we are currently, because now the market's picked up, we are getting these houses ready, okay? And we are going to be selling these houses.
And then we'll get all of this money back.
That's all we, well, whether we get all of it back, and we may end up at the end of it all of having supplement the program somewhat. But that's not wrong to do.
But we currently have a cash flow model that we work with Plant Moran that works that shows all of the money being paid back.
And maybe I need a private, ex, 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 ex...
No, it shouldn't be private. We're not, it's not a hearing.
Well, I don't understand because our LURF fund, who authorized the money to come out of our LURF fund?
Council.
For the state, neighborhood, with the...
They set up a line of credit when they first got into, to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. A line of credit was established. There's still money owed to LURF, considerable money. Okay? That's the status at this point.
So how much have they taken out of LURF? How much have we loaned to Neighborhood Stabilization out of the LURF fund?
I'd have to do a report to get the scientific numbers, but it's considerable. We can do a report, go back to day one.
Well, I need to know the information. I want to know. If no one else wants to know, because I need to know about that.
Especially Chair.
I can get that, I can get that at another time.
But I think that...
I'm concerned about the LURF fund.
I think you'd have to get into it, Mayor, because, because, you know, I look back at the situation, we shouldn't have been taking the money. I mean, there's so many ways that they control the amount of dollars and how... For example, if you have seventeen homes and you want to market them, first of all, you have to bring them up to code. So you invest that money. And then you have to find a purchaser and there's qualifications for that purchaser. So now you put all your money into a house. Then you've got to try to find a buyer that can meet the requirements to buy the house. And then the house has to be at a marketing value that you can recoup your money. The whole HUD deal is all screwed up. And trying to work within the guideline, and I asked Jim, get seventeen, eighteen homes, whatever it was, I said, why don't you take two or three and auction them off and get somebody to invest money to build up and they sell or whatever. You're not permitted. He has to bring them up to stuff.
Those were the rules when we entered the program.
I know that. But who knew that you would get hit with a fifty percent reduction in value?
Are we still buying them?
No. So what do I, what do you...
Mr. D. D. Bell. The balance is, I know for a fact it's under one point two million. I think it's actually like a million fifty-four thousand. I can tell you NSP...
The balance of what are you talking about?
The balance of what we owe LURF.
We're over a million dollars, we owe...
Yeah.
You've got seventeen houses up there.
Right.
Seventeen houses at a hundred thousand is one point seven million.
And I can tell you, in the NSP one checking account, we're sitting on about six hundred thousand cash. I think it's about eighty-five thousand in the NSP three account. I have about one point eight million that can be drawn down once we meet certain thresholds. We've ran almost...
So the money is there, but we can't draw it down? Is that what you're saying?
That's, until, the bulk of what we're doing now is completing the twenty-five percent set aside. The specs on six of those homes have been written. Two homes are under construction right now. One home, in the last month, we sold two homes, Clarkson and one on Addison. We've got another one going up for sale. But when you go through the cash flow analysis, the city's made whole in this. And we've gone through it. The issue we have right now is we could go back and pay LURF the six hundred thousand. I still have cash flow needs that need to be met in order to complete the renovations and sell these homes.
That's why we set up a line of credit in the first place.
I'm just very protective of the LURF fund and I'm steering them. Section Eight, I thought Section Eight was federally funded. Why are we, why are we dealing with this? Is it just the reporting or is it the fund deficit with Section Eight? Explain to me why it's Section Eight.
There's no fund deficit with Section Eight.
So why is it on here?
You've got one audit binding in there. It's a repeat from last year. And it has to do with staff historically purged files on the initial rent calculations. And we should correct it by law. And two, two years ago, you weren't even asking that question. Last year, you came in under some, for some reason, Plant Moran starts looking at this. And South Hill historically purged its original rent calculations. You've been doing this for years. Compliance changed, auditors started revealing it, and we haven't implemented. You sampled forty files and one, we did, was incorrect, that we did not have the original rent calculations in there.
If Mayor, if you could, on the slide, if you could just turn to page thirteen, I do want to clarify something on Section Eight. Just because we've actually worked with that department quite a bit over the last couple of years with several of the findings that we've had. So in two thousand and ten, we would have had five findings. Down to two last year and then one in two thousand and twelve. And as Mr. Zorn mentioned, it was, it's a document retention issue that actually, because we weren't required, apparently it's been required all along, but it just showed up in the compliance supplement, which means when it shows up in the compliance supplement, we have to look at it. And we actually had some tension with the department about what was required. It wasn't clear in the guidance. And so we've actually gone back and forth for the past year, finally got a joint...
You want no comments. What you do is you do nothing. You do not get any grants. You do not deal with Section Eight. You do not deal with NSP. Okay, you'll get no comments then. You don't deal with, you don't, you don't have to take...
So Jim, if we have to work towards, no one's saying that, Jim, but we have to work to be compliant.
Some of these are so technical, you can't do anything about them. If HUD changes a rule in the middle of the stream and they are forced by their rules to note it, how can you get excited about that? I mean, what we have to find out, what we have to concentrate on is those things that do have potential significance, as you pointed out, such as in the treasures. That's, that can, that can backfire on you. Okay? But I'm not too worried about a rule where they change, where they tell you purge the files one way and purge them another way and you've got forty files and one of them's, what?
Out of three hundred and thirty of clients. And we have rectified it. There was a forty-minute conference call with HUD Detroit getting very little direction. Staff threw us. Detroit Field Office did not say what, how our staff has done this is wrong. These files, year after year, basically every time a new, a lease is renewed, we're supposed to be doing a market analysis if they move to new property. Well, we did keep the original rent calculation or the original market analysis in the original file when a client came in. And it has been rectified. But it was a repeat finding because it was written up last year. And we thought we were in the process of correcting it. Okay, can we move on?
Truly noted, we're all concerned with the LURF fund.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, next.
Yes, I'll be brief. There are things in here that I think we've heard time and time again, you know, that we've weathered this storm. And I think when we say it sometimes, it might, I'm very cognizant that it doesn't come off as spin when the city says how great we're doing, you know, weathering the storm. Well, of course, we're going to say that, we want to say that. But when you have an outside validator that says all the same things that we're saying, it gives a lot of credence to it. So I just want to make sure that this is somehow summarized in next week's televised budget presentation. So that it's not just the city trying to put, you know, a silver lining to everything. We have, Plant Moran has done audit and it's come up with the same conclusion that, you know, we're down and we're not out. So I just want to make sure that this is somehow summarized for next week.
We'll include that in, we're working on the video stuff right now.
Especially if it's, I'm sure we're going to be on the defense of some members potentially next week, always on a televised meeting. And this gives us, this gives us something to combat it with.
Any other questions?
I just sent me a quick comment. When we were in our finance committee meeting and this report was given to us, we just felt we could not keep it. It needed to go to the floor.
Of course.
Because there's some great things in here that still divide the money.
You know, honestly, I don't interrupt, but I think this should always go to the full council.
Yeah, yeah. This is definitely necessary.
I think it's the obligation actually to make council, where is it?
That's... It is, there's interpretation of how you do that. You know, we've given you the letter.
We tried to follow what you asked us to do.
We've given you the letter, which probably technically fulfills our obligation. But we think it's better, and at the recommendation of the committee, that we have a chance to have the two-way communication with them, to be able to ask questions and so on.
That's it. And I still have to, again, commend our city administrator that has really navigated us in the initial statement of putting away money and fund balance. We get it to this point with forty percent loss in our state. Still, our state is...
Thirty-six percent reduction in state revenue. Amazing. Mr. Fraser.
Yeah, I have one of the concerns that the mayor expressed, and that is the Tennessee Treasurer's Office were an individual and I realize we're down. But it really puts us on the edge of, when one person takes the money and documents it and then verifies that it's been documented, it puts us at, it puts us at risk, a potential risk. And one of the things, if you, in the black book, where fifty-five thousand dollars was, could be located, so you just put it in his cash and, you know, you know, it... We still have warrants, you know? But that's, that makes it a little risky as far as I'm concerned. I think we really need to do something about it. And I wish there was one other person in the room to hear what I just said. Now, I have a question for Plant Moran. You do the audit on sampling. What would trigger a second round of sampling if you found problems? Or would it?
I mean, that's just actually what would cause us to do a second round if we do find errors. So we have kind of a standard sampling model that's based on our perceived risks. And so when we think there's more risk, we sample higher numbers. And if risk is lower, we sample less. Certainly in all areas of sampling, anytime we find an issue, the risk is elevated and we sample more samples. Try to identify how wide the credit is.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I have just a quick question about the notation you made about donations from memorial trust sponsorship fund activity.
Yes.
As it relates to TAW. TAW is funded, is this the Community Development Block Grant Fund?
Smart, a lot of that comes from Smart.
Or is it the revenue, because we do charge the seniors sort of voluntarily five dollars?
Yeah.
So what money is it?
Yeah, it's the money that you get from seniors for the program, but also some of the grant awards that you get from Smart to run that transportation program. The revenue and the expense activity is currently in a donation to Memorial Trust. And kind of really doesn't fit since it's more of an ongoing operation or service.
Yeah, I don't understand why that, why that's...
I'm not sure, to be honest, which is kind of why...
That's the duty roll money.
I don't think so. Duty roll.
Yeah, so really our recommendation on, our recommendation on that is we think the activity should just maybe be moved to Parks and Rec or the general fund to get it out of the memorial trust because it really doesn't seem to fit there. And I know we, I mean, we talked to Mr. Pierce, you know, and the department would agree that it should be moved.
What's in there now? We know what's in there now?
All of the activity, the revenue and expenses for that TAW program are currently being tracked through the donations in Memorial Trust. So the discussion we've had with the finance department has moved it out because it more appropriately would go in a general fund or a Parks and Rec since it's ongoing operation.
Because their funding is under, their state funding is, we got a letter that their state funding is going to cut fifty percent. I just sent it to the, to our lobbyists to see, did that actually happen or is that a proposal? But so...
The municipal credit. You're talking about the municipal credit.
Yes.
Jim, I think we fixed that in this current budget year, working with Doug Block, because you brought this up a year ago. But we should go back and check this.
We would have started talking about it while we were doing fieldwork and that would have been...
Well, we'll take a look at that.
Any other...
Didn't Jim Pierce say that there was another large chunk of money in this whole fund with the trust and...
Yes, Governor of the Library, Miller.
Oh, yeah, the Miller Trust Fund. Right, and he was going to see where the balance was.
Trust money, yeah.
Mr. President, I would just like to thank Plant Moran and Jim Schur. I know that he will stay a night, seven days a week. I don't think he sleeps. But, you know, it's really unbelievable for all the cuts and things that we have got and looking forward to, you know, the things that we just don't know.
Right.
And to kind of meet those expectations to keep the city still alive. I mean, I, I may want to thank Plant Moran too because of their interest involved in it, you know, it takes a team to come up with this audit and a budget and keep alive. And, you know, it's unbelievable. If you show anybody these figures, you're absolutely right. I mean, nobody would believe it. I mean, you can't take, you know, things of two billion seven down to two billion three or two, whatever it is.
Keep the door open.
And keep the door open, I mean...
Still go to business.
Yeah, certainly. But still have, and still not have a layoff. But not have a layoff.
Yeah.
I know we're thin, you know, in staff, but we're still here in the lines, really.
I'd like to take a second if I could, just on page seventeen, so we don't have our confused numbers, okay? When we say fifty percent, you add all these numbers, you get fifty percent. Two years of projections, okay? So when you look at the last two years, we put a five percent buffer on each of these two years as the footnote indicates. So if you don't need that amount of money for appeals, if appeals come in less, that can be, that can go into fund balance or it can go into capital projects. That's what we're hoping. But that's, this is a very cautious approach to what we're doing. But this tells us, if we can live with this discipline, we'll make it through. And we are living with this discipline. The numbers, when you take them mathematically, because the balance is declining, okay, it's less than fifty percent, that's where you get forty. Because, so that's, that's all the numbers. Fifty is just when you add the numbers together with projections that are cautious in the last two years. These numbers here, the first three, are already in the books.
Well, the good thing about the cautious approach is you sort of have nowhere to go but up. If the, if the appeals come in less, you have a pleasant surprise. You'll have some money freed up. If they come in right as estimated, you have the money set aside. Because a lot of places are not setting that money aside. And if those appeals come in, then they have their back against the wall and have to take it out of their current budget.
And one other thing that happens, matter of fact, we were working this weekend on this particular booklet because it summarizes things a little bit more effectively and is the newest of the new information. But we talked to the city assessor over the weekend, about fourteen fifteen. And even though, you know, we talked about housing coming around, and it's why we have this press on these seventeen houses, now's the time to get these ready.
Right.
So, so, and we're doing that. So, so we talked to the city assessor, and he said, be cautious about fourteen fifteen, it takes time for all this to work through, and we said, how can it be when you're, and then he reminded us, the CPI doesn't apply when you go backwards, okay, so there's no adjustment for CPI on a lot of the properties, and on and on, and he said, we'll be fortunate. Is that, is that your recollection, that at least, well, it's tough, it's tight to get to zero in fourteen fifteen, because first the property comes in then too. You get at least, no matter how that election comes out, we get one-year hit, and the minimum, the bare minimum, we get one-year hit for the under forty thousand group. If the election turns out one way, and it turns out another, then we're into that kind of long drawn out.
Personal property.
Yes, personal, personal property. So anyway, without using the subject, the council has shown a lot of patience in working with this stuff, you know, so.
Thank you very much for your presentation today.
Thank you.
If you have, if you have questions later, just have Mr. Scherr contact us, and we'll through Mr. Scherr, or visit with you again at your, at your pleasure.
One thing that I didn't say, that's in the letter about Glenn Moran, you're holding their peace flat for three years, so that's a proposal. Sorry to feel for us.
We want to see you survive.
Thank you.
You know, but I think we is bed flat for the last three or five years, and it'll be flat for three more.
All right. You're a little bit, you're just good.
I'm trying to move along. The Glenn Moran contract we knew will be on the consent agenda, are we in favor?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, we're good to go. All right, thank you again, Mr. Scherr, keep it moving, we have a.
We're going to find your house, this guy right here, find your house. You're playing us. Don't leave yet, I might need help.
As we've already discussed, there's a new rule in Lansing that, believable, is intended to create some public humiliation where possible. I can't explain it any other way, but in any event, the, the, the rule used to be that if you had a quote-unquote deficit, okay, you simply came up with a deficit plan, send it to the state of Michigan, and they approve, or they send it back and say no. But we always got all of them approved whenever we had the issue. Now they changed the rules, you have to go to council for this. So the best I can do from the P I perspective is to call technical adjustments, because that's what they are. These deficits are, as we explained, either because revenues are coming that haven't been, that haven't been recognized yet, that's two of them, and the other one is because we treat loans as loans, not as grants. If we just gave the money, we wouldn't have the deficit.
Yeah, but then we couldn't ask for a bank, if it was a grant.
That's true, that's true, so.
Why don't we ask for collateral?
This will be on next week's consent agenda as well as something to.
Just call it technical justice.
Just a quick question, what's the timeline to be, are we going to be timely?
Oh, we've already, yeah, the responses are in, we just have to get them approved by council, so we're going to, the next day will, the next day will reiterate, I guess, that's what we have to do.
We're just having our conversation actually.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I need to save one copies of the.
The answer is immediate, next day.
Can we do a rule ten?
Uh, did we ask for it? No, we didn't ask for it.
No, we didn't, but we could.
Not a bad idea, though.
Yeah, that way we don't, it's a side, it's a sideshow for next week.
I'd appreciate it, good thought.
All supported.
All right, motion is supported, all in favor.
Aye.
Should I make a motion that we get the year-end technical adjustment?
Support. Move by Jordan or by Fraser, all in favor.
Aye, it's moss, or my moss.
Tomorrow they'll get it.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
We're not done, you guys.
You're not done. Yeah, stay tuned, we're serving for us, that's the meaning.
Okay, the next one we do need, no, wait a minute, the one after, all right, request to seek approval of, for proposals for these assessments. Attorney?
Yes. The cable franchise with Comcast Cable will be at the end of the franchise period next March two thousand and fourteen, and the Cable Communications Act, which is a federal statute, governs how you proceed with a renewal of the franchise. And a component of the renewal process is that you undertake a need assessment. What you're trying to gauge is what are the future needs of your residents, your business, your community groups, the city staff, in terms of their cable needs for the future. We did this, you know, years ago when we initially did the franchise, and it's just an outside consultant, we go out and get proposals and be able to assess what those cable needs are. And so it's kind of like just a beginning, beginning step in this renewal process that we need to conclude by next March of fourteen. So we're asking on the seventeenth that council approve going out for a request for proposals for someone to consult the need assessment.
An authorization only, and it eventually, if it's approved, the needs assessment will come out of the.
There are people out there that do this for a living, that.
Yeah, we have a meeting in the morning.
Yeah.
Look at our community and see what we are.
Yeah, you know, they'll do focus groups, they'll do mailings, they'll do phones, they'll ride away, we're surveying what those needs are, so.
It's different than what television, radio stations have to do with their public access file. All right, so we're all agreement on consent agenda for next week?
Yep.
All right, moving on, this one we need a rule ten, Dr. Mr. Scherr, let me.
Yes, the current backup ambulance service provider is a breach of contract in that they have changed their procedure with regard to insurance, and no longer are providing the proper insurance coverage. They have gone to a self-insured format, and does not provide adequate security for us, and so we are going to seek proposals for backup ambulance services that meets our requirements.
All right, any question on that? We need a rule ten.
I need a motion for a rule ten.
Support. Move by Jordan or by Fraser, all in favor.
Aye.
I make a motion for backup.
Support.
Move by Jordan or by Fraser, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Good presentation. Let it be duly noted.
Thank you, chief. Is there anything you want to add?
Well, our concern, by our concern, Eleanor Cannon, Risk Manager and Legal Department, Mr. Scherr, is that we have adequate liability coverage for the city and adequate protection for the residents, and as far as mutual backup, and that's what we're going to shoot for.
Before we go on to number eight, I'd like to take just a quick minute. Ms. Banks has been in communication with Providence Hospital, and would like to have a meeting with us, and we're suggesting one day, September thirtieth, that.
The first step, the meeting is?
Ms. Banks.
Every year we meet with Providence Hospital, just an update meeting on what they're doing. We've actually been doing this for many, many years, and maybe if we are available on a Thursday, they would like to host a dinner meeting at their council location.
Do you mean the time?
I would think it would be around six o'clock.
Twenty, twenty.
It's on a Monday, the last Monday in September.
Is that a regular meeting?
There is no meeting scheduled.
Oh.
On that Monday, thirtieth.
Okay, you'll confirm the time, but, and we can put this on another agenda for approval.
Well, I was thinking of planning the next agenda for approval for scheduling again. At what time I'll confirm the time with Providence?
Let's not put it on the seventeenth. We have time, let's put it on July, all right?
July fifteenth.
I just don't want it to get long. We can't. It's going to be a two-minute approval.
Okay, be hanging around though for a while on Monday night anyway, so.
What's two minutes, honey, there's seven hours.
Of any, September thirtieth.
With Providence Hospital.
Okay, um, do you want to take a couple-minute break first? Ten o'clock, I think we should just keep going unless, if we need to use the restroom or something.
September thirtieth, six o'clock.
Yeah. I can see you're melting, right?
I am.
Drink more water.
Maryland retail, nobody else knows I make sandwiches.
That's pretty rough. Okay, Mr. Crowe, we're, follow up with the main speakers in here.
Good evening, a dear packet are the detailed notes from your vision session on these six. What I hope to do is just briefly go over the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats as a precursor to getting into the priorities, which have been listed and noted, and that's the actual work session, but the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats can be used as we talk about the priorities. We want to capitalize on our stress, strengths, and our opportunities, and we want to develop strategies to combat our weaknesses and our threats. So just quickly, strengths, and I put these in alphabetical order, are access to freeway, available land in the city, and we have a beautiful city, the city center district, city services and city staff, codes enforcement, developers, diversity, existing infrastructure, family-oriented activities and parks, fiber optics, financial position, geographic location, the growth of Lawrence Tech and Oakland Community College, higher education, housing variety, the library, location, that we're a major business center and a media center, our open space and natural areas, parks and recreation, the pavilion, our police and fire services, Providence Hospital, our residents, public schools, the skyline of the city and unique architecture have been listed by the council as strengths. With regard to weaknesses, the amount of alternative financial services, codes, deteriorating roads, deterioration of sidewalks and pathways, diversity, economic development, the foreclosure crisis, a lack of draw to destinations, a lack of unified gateways into the city, a lack of nightlife, a lack of a succession plan, limited chain restaurants, retail choices, and grocery stores, need for better communication, neighborhood deterioration, no downtown, no social life, Northland Mall. With regards to marketing effort, marketing the pavilion more effectively, need better communication partnership with the Southfield Sun, and we need to brag more. Other weaknesses include population decline for council decisions, reactive, not proactive, we need to take more calculated risks, the reduced number of city staff. With regards to regional reputation, oftentimes the city is overlooked, a lack of regional transit system, rental homes, sign-awards regulations, student performance is substandard, the tax base and the tax rate have all been identified by council members as weaknesses. Opportunities, biomedical engineering, capital improvement projects, we need to take advantage of low interest rates for bonding, including road repairs, and to capitalize on daytime and nighttime populations. Opportunities in the city center district include Central Park Boulevard, Civic Center Drive, special events, the downtown development authority, economic development have been listed as opportunities, educating new residents is an opportunity, encourage more parent involvement, and a front lawn at the municipal complex. Homers associations have been identified as an opportunity to engage residents and to increase inbound migration. Institute parking fees at the municipal complex, and partnerships with Lawrence Tech University, partnering with local media, work with local newspapers, partner with other governmental units and agencies, including local county, regional, state, and promote university high school. Reaching out to young adults is an opportunity, harness their creative class, reconfigure parking requirements to fit current needs, school of pharmacy, there's room to grow, selling the city, intuding our own horn is an opportunity, market demonstration projects, for example, the carbon fiber bridge, and streamlining city services. Towns and gowns, partnering with local universities and colleges, has been seen as an opportunity and vacant space. And finally, threats to the city that have been identified by the council on May sixth are our aging population and our changing demographics. With regards to city services, codes enforcement staffing, level of services versus staffing levels, and nonprofits that use city services. Crime is a threat with regards to perception of crime, rising rates, increased gun crimes and ownership, and deterioration of neighborhoods. Detroit has been identified as a threat with regards to proximity to, and the investment that is going downtown with, with individuals like Dan Gilbert. Employment, a lack of high-paying jobs, city versus state unemployment rate, and foreclosures in vacant homes. With regards to housing threats, the lack of housing options, new market trends in housing, lack of civil discourse among elected officials, and the lack of future vision. With regards to litter, litter on streets, at apartment complexes, loss of quality restaurants and major retailers, and negative attitudes. With regards to threats from the new economy, shrinking office and retail space, maintenance of existing businesses, commercial value deterioration, and pirating of businesses from one community to the next, Northland Mall's condition and lack of good quality mix of retailers. Our older infrastructure means more deteriorating roads and aging sewer and infrastructure. Perception of image with regards to news media, pitfalls have been identified as a threat, lack of development-friendly regulations, the growth of charter schools, and stereotypes and prejudices with regards to schools, and finally transit, the lack of affordable options, having a vocal minority, and somebody listed our zip code location. And finally, I developed a chart as a worksheet with the council, and there was eight members that voted, each had five dots, if you remember, for our priorities, so there was a total of forty dots or forty votes that were cast on, on all the items that were discussed under our top ten priorities. City center development was tied with the highest number of dots, or twelve and a half percent of all votes that were granted. Then came marketing, if you combined marketing and attracting young professionals, marketing city events, and promoting ice arena, and so forth down the line. With the council president's discretion, what I'd like to do is take each one of the top scoring categories and ask the council to start listing action plans or action items with regard to each of these. So if city center development was the number one priority, what are some of the action items that we need to work on? And for example, special assessment is due for renewal next year in fiscal year thirteen, fourteen. So one source of revenue is maybe to increase the amount of special assessment. Currently, we're requesting two cents per square foot of non-residential. So to increase the annual assessment, which equates to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, by raising that to four cents, that would double the amount of money that we would have to leverage. So that may be one. So that may be one action plan. Another one might be, uh, acquiring certain key parcels or promoting or marketing. We saw the, um, presentation on, uh, Sister City, developing a marketing campaign. Those are all potential action items that the council may choose, and we'll, we'll list those down here tonight. And depending on amount of time, either tonight or a follow-up meeting. Then the next, um, the next step in this process is to identify individuals or departments that are responsible for implementing, um, developing a time period, and then ultimately tying it in with the budget.
So, um, is it your intention then to take each one?
Each one at a time.
Do you wanna take the first one right now?
Yes, and, and we'll, and then I'll just, I'll list the, um, action items that the council comes up with, and then you, we can sort those out later.
Uh, you were asked to bring ideas tonight.
Can I make a recommendation that with the top ten priorities that we have, that we could give this to administration to see what sort of way they can implement, what we've given rather than us deciding what department we want this to go to? But we, our administrators have a better hand.
But let's do the idea part of it, and then.
But we've already got.
Well, we're asking for some, some act- specific action plans. For instance, let me give you a for, for example, something I thought of for the city center development. Uh, we've done a business study. Uh, we have data about, uh, what amount of retail, um, could be supported across the street. But we don't have a housing study. We met with, uh, Mishda, Fred, and I, and Terry Woodstair, a couple of staff members. And one of the things that they cited is for is you need more data on housing, um, in a city center area. Uh, what could it support?
And, and these are the ideas that I suggest that the council do around table one, and then we can work with administration on responsible parties to come back for the endorsement of the council. But the hope tonight is to generate a list of ideas under each of the priorities, and on the, on the.
And we, we may not have some ideas, but.
Might not.
But this is an opportunity, so, um, you following me? Or, or I'd like to go as far as the signing, I wouldn't take your suggestions. All right, um, Mr. Moss, then, Miss Seymour.
I'll kick off the city center, um, and kinda give an update, I guess, to the full council about what we're doing, and maybe kill two birds with one stone, try to schedule our next meeting. Uh, when Councilwoman Jordan and Councilman Prakash and I met, we really decided we wanted to take tangible steps to, with the Economic Development Committee to focus our first phase on everything that city center needs to be successful. So I would say our committee, as it exists, I mean, we've formed a really good group, um, including Mr. Peterson who's in the audience, Mr. Jawad, uh, Mark Rookie from L T U, help me out here, both.
Jim Jenkins from J.
Jim Jenkins, and.
Mark Lowpattan.
And my question for both of you is, and, and the administrators, can we meet two weeks, uh, from today on the twenty-fourth to kinda get this group going? I know you wanted to wait till after the budget was formally done, so you could put other things. So we could load up your plate a little bit more. Uh, but the twenty-fourth, um, does that work for both of you? Okay, I'll follow up with both of you. So those are, those are some of the things we're doing, um, with city center. To try and get, you know, the city center advisory board exists, and it, and it has a function and it has a purpose, but we need to make sure some of the city policymakers are in sync with what they're doing. So there's, uh, there's the action item for city center.
We're going to thank the two on that, so you had to set me on one.
Okay.
Just out, just out of curiosity, how successful are the townhouses? Is there, are they full, empty?
Oh, the, the, I'm sorry.
The townhouses.
Across the street.
Or across the street.
Hotel, you've probably know, but this.
You mean five thousand, seventeen?
No.
No, the town doing, you go round the town.
You don't know, I see some on for sale on Zillow, which is, uh, you, you put in a zip code and you can find out. So I always, I would be afraid of seven five, because when I watch all the time. And I see, uh, sprinkling a townhouse for sale over there. And they, they had foreclosures too, because that's on Zillow.
Do you know anything about it?
I don't really have the current numbers, but I have not seen very many for sale signs lately.
I haven't.
But I haven't checked on Zillow either. I can tell you that in, in our building, in the five thousand town center building, we have only two units up for sale right now.
How, how many units?
We have sixty-eight Zillow.
Oh, yeah.
Two thousand and six.
Well, I think we'll do a little homework on that.
Well, and I, I think, I think that gets back to the housing study.
Yeah, well, that's what I think is driving my, uh, my question. Right. Okay, um, Miss Seymour was next.
Yeah, I have a question, when you said that the marketing study had already been done, you're talking about that Gitcher report that we heard?
Yeah.
That, that he gave.
We got a report on what this area could sustain.
Right, that was what you're referring to, what we had at the library.
But we didn't have, and, and this is what Mishda said to us, great data, but you really need to have a companion study on housing.
Well, there are, there are other pieces to that too. Mishda, for example, we have an approved brownfield plan, and they're tying their economic development incentives to better market analysis, so when we met with Jim Tishner, and I saw Jim on Sunday, um, they're still looking to, they actually are willing to fund fifty percent of that study.
Well, again, it's my hope to try to generate a number of ideas under each priority, and then we'll, we'll.
All right, so, uh, do we have any other, uh, things on the list for city center?
Mr. Prakash.
Which one do I, I'm.
Uh, the city center.
Oh, man.
I know you had some ideas about acquisition strategy.
Yeah, you know, I, um, you know, can I just take one second? It's, 'cause I bought an article, just take a second. This is Ada, Michigan, Amway Shift Focus of Redevelopment through Ada. And it says, Amway paid twelve million dollars to acquire twenty-two acres through property management plan. Then it goes on to say, Amway has thirty-five acre stake in the village. The corporate giant owns nearly half of the land in the triangle-shaped village bordered by full ten-man railroad track, et cetera. Township officials could be happier. We feel blessed, we are now in the positions that Robert Chairman of Aids is downtown development plan, which is overseen design, and we property acquisition unite. The land under one owner is a six clearing, an obstacle to a major redesign. And that's what it's all about. We have fragments of properties, and we have to find a way that we can put some of those properties together to create a single ownership developer. And, and even the east-west road, right, which is projected on the plan, you know, it crosses different properties, and, and there's no way you're gonna get the road access unless you look and deal with populists. And so, and this thing came out just this last week in Detroit News, and I cut it out because, you know, it just makes the point that you own the land, you can do anything you want.
All right, anything else for, uh, good point, um, anything else for city center? All right, then, uh, we'll move on to marketing. Run the top priorities, right, and to run the second one?
Yeah.
All right, uh, firsthand, I saw this with Lawrence.
For attracting young people, young professionals, I think the city of council should start a young professional, group committee or something for the city of council. Um, I've seen it done in other communities, and it really drives the, um, the government to identify their concerns and issues. In some kinda way, we need to have young business professionals or something that the city, just like we did a veteran's commission. We need to have a young commission, something.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that, matter of fact, they had a big article about Pittsburgh. They had young people who were saying why they moved to Pittsburgh. I, I think what we are lacking is having things that brings a young executive into this city. And, and, uh, and it has to be, you know, going to the universities and saying, hey, you know, why do you get out of town? Some kind of, you know, where do you go when you leave here? Why don't you come in and, and have some nightlife? But, but that's how you're gonna bring young people. Young people like to hang out, hang together, mix, and, and unless you provide that, they're not gonna have it. They're not gonna, there's no way. And, um, but I, I think we've got such an advantage because we've got Central, Phoenix, O C C, L T U, there that, that, you know, have young people that come here and, and, you know, it, it just, you know, we just gotta get them collectively reading places, you know, it's part of our standard day, and in place.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that would drop, I mean, kids aren't gonna go over here for Christ's sake.
Next is. But you're next.
My question is, are we looking to, uh, attract young people to the city? Or are we looking to keep the young people that are in the city? I think we need to look at some numbers, because we might have a community that really don't support bringing them.
So to do both.
You know, I think we need to decide.
And then you have to do both.
Yes, I think we need to look at our census numbers, because we may just be, and I'm all for having young people here, but I, I wanna make sure we're just not aiming in the dark if the young people aren't here. If they're in Troy, or they're in Ferndale, or Royal Wood.
Yeah, but we, I agree, we need to know what we have to start with.
Um, next was, uh, Mr. Moss.
Yeah, uh, the Chamber of Commerce does a great, or I've presented several times, their third Thursday event. And I think we could better promote, it's like, you know, it's just a social networking gathering of young professionals in Southfield. And I think we need to better help them promote that, you know, we have to figure out, how do you get people to stay here after five o'clock? Um, and I don't, you know, there's, there's probably, I'd, I'd like to see numbers too, like Ms. Jordan. How many people work here? How many people don't live here but work here in a certain age bracket? So I don't know if that requires a survey, I, you know, we take surveys and it just sounds like a headache, but I'd like to see who works here, or all throughout the city, what, what age bracket they are, and where do they live? Um, and then what's our floating potential in getting people to stay here after five? Um, I think things like, we can do things on the front lawn now, I, I've been a big proponent of that. The more things that we have going on for people to, you know, trip out of work and go to, the more likely they're gonna stay at Southfield and spend their money here and perhaps wanna live here if everything. If everything's more convenient, where you can live and work in the same area, my generation's gonna do that. The commute from Troy to Southfield is inconvenient, so I, I think we just need more things going on. And I know that sounds like a broad topic, but I would support any Parks and Rec effort to do something with this front lawn, to get creative, unique events going on after five o'clock.
I agree.
I would, uh, uh, on, on another plan on marketing, uh, I noticed that we all get the Southfield stuff. And when we don't feed them stuff, what they do is they go to the police blotter. And they pick up stories that, you know, we'd rather not have them, on, at least on the front page. So I think we need, um, a regular feed, particularly to the sun, but also the eccentric, of positive stories, and, and they don't need to be just like feel-good stories, but things that, um, council's doing that are for the betterment of the city, or the residents, or whatever, just. And other, and, I know reporters well, and they go where the low frank hanging crude is. This is a certain, uh, time crunch, their laziness, and the police blotter's one of the easiest things you can do. Um, and we don't need that.
I wondered if we need to have a, just a frank discussion with the council, uh, just to see, you know, hey, can you, can you do P R I activities this day? Can you highlight our frank.
I'd say we'd probably welcome it.
Maybe you need to talk to them.
Yeah, we don't speak too much ever. But, you, you know, last week I read quotes, uh, of, in support Geraldine Amato and.
Oh, yeah.
Brian Jones, uh, are all quoted, and, and the story is supporting, uh, something you discussed while I was in China, but, uh, that's just lazy, you know, um.
It was the kids' zone, the fun zone, and so it was about the public hearing.
Oh, she took quotes from the public here.
And three people quoted were three people we don't need to be ambassadors for our city.
So, sure, I think.
One other thing I've heard council mention in the past about better utilizing Communications Department, Public Relations, or like social, social media, I don't wanna put any words in. There was some train of thought about.
Right.
Using social media more.
Another suggestion I have is, uh, video feed, uh, video streaming.
Yeah.
Uh, on our website. Pictures, uh, YouTube stuff, those things.
If it's two to three minutes, it can go, you know, it's watchable, it's viral, it can go places, but, uh, we can't keep pumping out these, uh, ten-minute, uh, online things.
Mary Lawrence?
I, I don't know how many of you guys noticed it, but Lakewood Village did Summer in Lakewood Village. And what I found was so compelling about that, you didn't have a separate publication for Parks and Rec, you didn't have a separate publication for police. It was the, the farmer's market, it was the youth program, it was concerts, like, we, we still are in funnels. Because just think about Summer in Southfield, you've got the, the concerts over there, you've got, um.
Eat to the beat.
Eat to the beat, you have the burbs, you have the, the gardens over there, you have all this stuff going. And I was kinda excited about Little Lakewood Village because it was so comprehensive.
It's not the first year they've got it either.
No, it's not. And the thing that I think we miss in opportunity is that we're still in silos, and it's nothing else we need to bring our marketing to one place. And so, i- it just blows me away how the police department has a marketing.
Library.
The library has one, Parks and Rec has one, the city has one. Why aren't we speaking in one voice to maximize our, and I, I just wanna piggyback. Media, I, I know them very well too, and they are, we call it lazy, but they're not gonna work hard. And we could give them, just like the senior guys, that is a, a wonderful story. The, um, you know, our ga- our schools are hired a media person, and I can tell you, I read more about our schools than I ever have. And it's impressive, it is raising the image to me of our schools, which is a good thing. But our marketing department, we have a public, uh, uh, Public Relations. We need to have a marketing department that drives our marketing, and that is every day. Every day, there should be a list of things going out, and we should get copies of it. And you don't have to copy it and put it in your package, you can email it, it goes out and is distributed to all of us. So we know what's going on too.
Um, and this is what we've talked about with this marketing side, uh, a whole approach to what we're, what we've been doing. Anyhow, um, Miss Seymour was next.
Yeah, I wanted, um, if that's tracking unprofessionals, if we don't have restaurants and places for them to go, I mean, we've been trying to get restaurants, and we're not very successful at it. They're not gonna stay down, just, we don't have enough, you know, like, we can have all the concerts we want, and it's, we're not gonna have one every summer weekend, we just, but it, they would stay if they had places to go. And we are not, have not been successful in attracting restaurants. So, you've got a Ferndale, Royal Oak, you've got all these coffee shops, you've got all these restaurants, you've got plenty of places for just ice cream shops to peel the popcorn. So why would they stay down here? Like, that, I mean, that's a big part of it.
Your suggestion is that we need to mark, find, um, I'm turning it around what you're saying. Uh, we, we need to, uh, double our efforts in, uh, restaurants and, uh, Uh, we, we need to, uh, double our efforts in restaurants and, uh, yogurt shop, ice cream, whatever.
Well, I mean, it, we have tried, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be negative, but we have tried and we have not been successful. And, but that's a key component of people staying downtown is to have, not just come over here for a concert or an event, which is often for children, families with children. There has to be a place to make them wanna go to Congress. And that's usually some sort of a rest, restaurant or coffee house. And what we have here doesn't keep them down, doesn't keep them here.
But we're seeing some, in this weather, we're across the street. The other night I was over there for two hours at a, a meeting, and the place was buzzing.
What place, where was it?
Across the street, it's a car club, the shops down the street are.
Tim Hortons.
Tim Hortons, all of those.
Oh, okay, okay.
It was a nice night and everybody was outside. It was loaded, you couldn't park in front, and then, and we're talking six, seven o'clock at night.
Right, so that's, that's very, that's very new. That's, right, I know, I know.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, Joada said that to me, that it's like that, that he was down there now, but.
It's true.
It's, but it's.
It's not the same.
It's been there a long time, Tim, that's why, that's.
Yeah, it's a start. All right, uh, let's see, who was next? Um, Jeremy and then?
No. Um, I forgot what it was. All right. It's you, it's the hour.
You know, I was gonna give a different clip on the marketing. Why couldn't we contact the businesses that are here and ask for a good news story? And they feed us a bunch of stories that we then can feed out to the people. I mean, we can build our own bible of good news stories from all these businesses. Put it to log and each people we've seen, we're feeding their good news stories to Southfield Sun, to Detroit Free Press, to whomever. And so we're turning around the city by marketing the businesses that are already here and have them give us some good news that we can start. You know, we gotta start doing our homework.
That's good.
And it's just a different way to look at it and, you know.
Mr. Frazier, Mr. Ross.
I would have deferred to, uh, Mr. Ross so he doesn't forget again.
Thank you, I appreciate that, well.
He's getting older.
I am, I am.
Junior moment, right.
Yeah, I, uh, Ms. Jordan is actually, she's going to spark what I was gonna say. I got a, a rush when I saw the City of Southfield newsletter that was emailed out to all of us. That's the type of thing we need to keep building off of. And to go back to Don's point that he keeps talking about, when Crane's kind of ignored Southfield, it's not even about, you know, I agree, we need to keep pummeling, you know, sort of good stories out there, but even just getting our name out there. Every week we have a summary of things that are going on. It can be anything as simple as, it doesn't have to be something glamorous. But as long as they see Southfield, it's Friday at three thirty, they know they're getting an email from the City of Southfield. So it's not even just the Southfield Sun, but it's Crane's, it's Detroit. So that, it triggers their mind, oh, Southfield is doing something and I should expect it at three thirty on a Friday. So it's the consistency.
But it's Facebook and Twitter.
Exactly.
And it's those constants.
Constant, yeah. So it doesn't have to be anything, you know, we don't have to be searching for anything that we got going on. We need to just keep pummeling out and, and letting it go.
Isn't that what, uh, a guy does down the street?
Ward Crimp is doing that in a very near a row for the city center and the D D A. But in the past, there's been a tendency not to promote businesses from the city. So it's, it's about a philosophy. And, and, you know, that, it's a, it's a new, it's a new day, so it's a new way of looking at things. Because the, the information's there. We get, Lawrence Tech gives us updates two to three times a week about everything that's going on. And we just feed that right into our city center district. The D D A gets information from Providence Hospital, OCC. It's channeling that positive message.
Do we have to claim somebody to do this?
No, it's, no, it's, the businesses, as long as they have a, an avenue, they, they send it to us. They can be routed through Public Relations or whatever department.
But even this, I don't read this cover to cover, but I know that every, every packet, I'm gonna get something from, uh, Ms. Gregory and it lets me know that, you know, there are things that are going on, just, yeah. That is still alive.
Mr. Frazier, did you have something to start with?
I do. Um, I know, uh, Ms. Seymour said that we need more restaurants and it's in the same vein to attract young professionals. But I think we need to broaden that a little bit. Uh, I think we need like music venues, uh, jazz, places where folks can, uh, can collect and listen to music. Uh, also, we were in Grand Rapids and they had a microbrewery. And, uh, I'm telling you, that was packed, it was elbow to elbow in there, and it was all age groups. Uh, they had not only microbrewer, uh, all different kinds of beers, but they had food. And you had a hard time finding a place to set. So if we could market, or if we could attract either a music venue, or maybe a microbrewery, something that, uh, is different, it, it sets us aside from the next city down the road that, uh, would bring young people in.
I thought we had a couple of microbreweries.
We got Pepper Canyon, but that, I don't consider that a microbrewery.
But there's one, isn't there one up there in the, um, not far?
It's Brewing Supply.
Well.
I think he went out of business.
He did.
He called them. Who did?
One up there.
Okay, maybe outside marketing.
That would be, that would be nice to do, a music venue.
Yeah, re, along that vein, Restaurant Week, I thought was great. And I tried, I tried to get as many people as I could coming out. So I, I, I was, I don't want to, I don't wanna see it to be an annual, I want it to be regularly, you know, like, you have a spring Restaurant Week and a fall Restaurant.
Just two thousand.
Right.
Okay.
You know, just on that Restaurant Week, um, we had a Fashion Week activity, um, um, Ms. Jordan's doors, and that, that brings some, some, I'm, I'm just lost words. Like, it makes the city sexy, it makes the, you know, seem alive and, and life in it. And, you know, Restaurant Week, Fashion Week.
That thing is September.
September.
Everything. Cause Detroit just lights up during Fashion Week, there's so many activities for you to go to. And then we, um, at amphithe, amph, am I saying amphitheater?
Amphitheater.
I've seen other communities use that. I mean, there's, there's the high school musical play by the high school is done outside and the community comes out. And we have, we talked about it on our front line, jazz musicians, um, you know, cultural groups will come and do their dance, and it's outside, it's open to the public. And, you know, it's, it's things that wouldn't bring in the negative group, but it's something positive that people would love to participate. Even showing the movie in the amphitheater and bring the, the, it, it creates a venue through that tired old Parks and Rec van that we can't, we can't trail it, we can't afford to buy a new one.
But let me tell you, if you put lights on the volleyball court, you have night volleyball, you're a total person.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure we'll do it.
And people can see it from the road.
Yeah.
With the brewper down the street.
Nobody, nobody sees, nobody sees them all here back there.
And I swear to you guys, if you do a dog park, it will make you think like a progressive city.
I don't say that.
It will. Every progressive city.
In an entire city with a dog park, so not everybody can go poop on a cob.
Okay, um, Mr. Ross.
I, when I lived across the street from Star Theater, and she's, she's reminding of this, I used to go to movies all the time there, I mean, I still do, but it is dead empty in there. And I have Facebook friends with the mayor of Kalamazoo, became a friend of mine. And he promotes, he goes, Tuesday night is movie with the mayor. I'm going to see this movie, come out, join me in the community. What if we did movie nights that, you know, starts, starts out to, oh, sorry, I didn't have three movies with the mayor. But what if we do, you know, like the city, we go, and say, come out with your neighbors, uh, on Tuesday, where, you know, there's the, or Friday night is the premiere of this movie. Why don't you and your neighbors go out to start Southfield? And it's not like there's competing movie theaters. We should help drum up business with some of these things. Yeah, yeah?
You know, that volleyball is Detroit's social club. You know, and, and, I mean, that group, really, and if they had a place to go after volleyball, you can't believe.
Yeah.
Every Wednesday, every Wednesday.
Group, yeah. Get a group down the street in the new.
Yeah. It's, it's like the Wingstop, it started attracting people after five o'clock, get the right group. Talk about strengthening the taxpayers, people who weren't exercising. Talk about strengthening taxpayers.
We'll move on to, uh, strengthening the taxpayers.
Now, there's, there's some subcategories that the council mentioned during the discussion session. We can build the combos, but.
All right, strengthening the taxpayers. Have they got any new ideas?
Everything that's been said.
Come on, Phil, yeah.
That's our most, that's our most important stuff.
Yeah.
I think that's what, above all.
I mean, that's what I gave her. I gave you a little.
You mean it?
Just a new kind of meter.
Parking?
Well, just to start a discussion, one of the items you had is to seek alternative sources of revenue. And there's a lot of different ways to do that.
How was it you bring up that nonprofit, what's this, what do you call that, um, payment and move, uh?
Payment and load taxes.
Yeah, I really, we said we were gonna look into that. And I think that's, that's a great way to, you know.
Yeah.
By what?
Cause you're talking about, you know, there in tax, it sounds like that will, will pay for, it's a big service.
Again, you gotta look at the number, how many are here? How many nonprofits do we have?
Towns.
Towns. Hospitals.
Well, we need the data.
I'll put down on the table. Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be available to the census vote? Wouldn't that be available? Or, I mean, to some organization, we don't have to do that.
I think Shelly might be able to help us with that with her.
Well, we don't need to do that, I mean, I'm trying to avoid having staff things that were, you know.
But it's on a computer, she should do a search.
It's something, it's available somewhere, that's my point.
Yeah. She's got a program. Um, Mr. Crowe, did you hear Ms. Jordan about parking?
Yeah, I have that on there. Um, quarter improvement authority. So just, these are just some things that I was hearing. Pilot, payment and load taxes for nonprofits, consider naming rights, special assessments, quarter improvement authority, um, parking fees, and there are others.
I personally think there should be computer feeds at the library. I think it's not about not letting people in or borrowing.
After they pay the parking fee.
Yeah.
Parking.
Exactly.
Well, we talked about, um, special assessments for capital improvement projects like lighting, sidewalking and others, that one would. Right, but maybe taking more advantage of it is, we talked about that with the side one infill program. The D D A wanted to do a special assessment for street lighting, there might be special assessment for local roads. Uh, just taking advantage of that tool.
Yeah, that's also, you know.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anything else for strengthening tactics? If not, we're moving on to gateway development? Would you also remind me what that was?
Well, I think Ms. Jordan.
Oh.
Mentioned about attractive entrances and unified signage and landscaping and so forth.
Well, we were at Kamau on Friday, and they would love to be, uh, have a sign that says, the home of Kamau.
Remember, why not?
Why not? And they're, they're absolutely fabulous what they're doing with it, we were just blown away.
I told them that, they had a little miniature, uh, robot there.
You got one there.
And I says, put it, I says, get, I told, matter of fact, I told, I said, Roy Hobbs. I was ready that, I said, and you need to, if you give me permission, put it in the medium and put a light on it and, you know, and make it an art piece, just sit there.
Yeah, okay. Put that other piece, oh, yeah. You asked.
To get an M dot, permit.
Oh.
Yeah, to work on it, get me a permit. Cause I talked to M dot, they said, you gotta permit, they got, see, this is a robot.
They would have a scale model of what they actually do and have it as a marker right in the park. They wanted it in the front of their property, why not in the median of telegraph? And.
They need to throw it on both sides?
And it would be public art and, you know.
Making tires.
Yeah.
And it's an introduction to our tech corridor. So I've got that as art, art sculpture.
Tech gear, USA. Your venture.
Art and sculpture, attractive entrances, signs and landscaping, robotics and media, street skate designing, street skate palace. Okay.
That's along with that, you know, I know there's certain areas of the association that have good pockets for the money. If we can encourage them to, um, either put a nice landscape or a nice, uh,
Where are you talking about?
Entrance marker, you know, to the gateway.
Yeah, but where are you talking about? There's some though.
Our local association do have good pockets. So let's put a challenge to them to make their entrance, not just the flowers, but, you know, a very good entrance.
We better promote the, uh, Community Pride Award, not that it's, you know, we could expand it somehow and make it even more fill in competition or something like that.
So it could be, uh, you could establish on that vein, the neighborhood associations adopt, uh, have organizations and groups adopt areas for maintenance and for.
Oh, yes. You have moved on to, to the, to the, um, the Fisher. And you look at that boulevard on the, and each block of flowers is donated by a corporation. I don't know why we don't do that because, like, when you come off the lot, this is your route. When you come up that little ugly little piece of grass, I said we either need to make it concrete or make it pretty, cause it's just ugly. When you come up, you come up on Ten Mile, it's this little strip of nothing, it's just weeds.
From the lodge?
Yeah, on Evergreen. And we either need to, just, cause I've, I've seen, yeah, I've seen, um, cities put, put papers there or something, but it's just ugly, it's weed, and it's, it's just looking.
And then litter.
And litter. I don't know, we just need to do something, cause it's just, it's such a problem.
Still office space.
That works.
Well, some of it is marketing.
There are more actions.
We make this exciting here.
We need to find a Dan Gilbert from Southfield.
Dan Gilbert from Southfield.
But for Southfield, we need, and maybe it's not gonna be one person, but the department, the, um, the showstax is off somewhere else. Uh, what's, what's a couple of the other ones, the Radico and whatever, they have existing businesses in this city. And we have not empowered them to say, market this city so your property can be more successful. Everybody operates in their own little piece. Even the city center advisory board, they come to the table, but they're only interested in, you know, marketing their building, they're afraid of competition.
I don't know, but I had a look down on Memorial Day. They have a young man that was in recruiting at Northland. And they, and they can't recruit anybody, so they're leaving, the army's leaving Northland. Cause they can't recruit anybody. And, and it says, oh, there's a bunch of hoodies.
German.
They're pulling out of Northland, so when the army pulls out, that's a blow it up.
When we had, uh, we had my, uh, the political, the political leadership program, and it was in Detroit last month. And I took, uh, Dan Carroll to task about saying, you know, when you're, when you're growing Detroit, you either have to grow the population, otherwise you're shifting the population away. One of the members of my class was telling me, you know, what is your community foundation doing? Is your community foundation reaching out? Is your community foundation setting up funds for business developers to, to donate within, to allocate around? I don't know, maybe we should have a, a, a meeting with our community foundation. Can they, can we get them on the, on the business side rather than, you know, being, you know, I, I like the community things they do, but we could ar- arm them to be a, to be a.
Yeah, that's something I thought of.
Get rid of them.
I.
Or empower them, you know, one or the other.
No, get rid of them, because they've got the wrong, they're on the wrong track.
Well, I think we should meet with them.
Well.
I think we should sit down with them, like we did in the heart of our.
I have, I have a little more hope than that, um, and I'm a regular contributor to the community foundation.
They've never had.
Well, I, I think. Well, I, personally, I think the.
That's a powerful board, the leadership. Let's sit down with them.
Yeah. So, the, so, some of the things the leadership is doing are, we're very tired.
I, I think, as you know, people, um, wanna get excited and put their money in their names as something that's exciting and new. After a time, they don't wanna continue to spend money on maintaining something that's been around, so it's sparking them to get them excited about. I, yeah, like the baseline, you know, monument, it's just a small example of something new and exciting, and you tap into resources that you might not have, because you've got engineers and surveyors and art enthusiasts. Finding that thing, like, with the business community, to get them excited. The thing that sparked us off is what if, you know, what if they wrote a letter, what if it was the community foundations had, letterhead, wrote a letter to, to Dan Gilbert? And said, you know, "We, we have this fund set up for, for community development here, as, you know, as you're Southfield born and raised, we want, you know, some of your investment to come here." But we, we don't have that discussion sparked off yet, so we need to, I think we need to sit down with them and restructure some of their focus, to, to get them more on the business side as well. It's all one in the same, community.
Future attempt, yeah.
But you see, and I know, I'll drop it, but they have lost the whole purpose of themselves.
Yeah.
It was never meant as a school foundation, it was never meant as a, as a Lakewood foundation, it was supposed to be a, a Southfield cultural and business foundation. And it went all over the place. The only way they're existing is we put up the farm, just let it, we put up the farm, so then we can get matching funds. And, and, and then, the only way they're existing is because they took the money from, from across the shield.
They're not getting it anymore.
I know that.
Right.
They're going by way.
So, we, we need to.
They're going by way.
It's too, we're too big of a city not to have a thriving community foundation.
I know that.
So, we need, we need.
But you had to have the purpose established again.
Let's, let's, let's meet with them.
Yeah, we need.
I know.
Can, can, instead of the community foundations, I don't know why, but the Economic Development Growth Authority in Detroit is really driving all the development in Detroit. They took it out of city government, and they have this separate entity, and it is driving. And sometimes, you know, I get frustrated sometimes here at the table, cause I feel sometimes we get in the way of development, but that in other cities, I know, uh, Grand Rapids has one, um, Ann Arbor. And so, I would like for us to look at an economic growth authority for the city of Southfield.
Yeah.
We talked about that in our, in our meeting.
You had a, a business sort of.
Have a presentation from Ann Arbor Spark.
All right, we're moving on to, um, my favorite topic, public art. Um, I want a public art commission, and it's, uh, very different. Uh, it encompasses, um, uh, neighborhood identification, it's not just, uh, sculptures, um, it, um, could be expression, any kind of expression of art, uh, street skates. For instance, um, I showed, um, uh, some of you pictures with Scottsdale on. They took, instead of, pretty of a regular street sign that says, you know, Elm Street, they took an eye beam, and they put a, on, uh, Elm Street drilled in holes in the eye beam, in the ground, and then it's lit by a solar panel, little tiny solar panel, lights it up, and it's, it's beautiful. Uh, these little dots of white light, and it spells out Elm Street, you know, when, when you pull up to an intersection. Um, you know, it, it, you're, you're gonna put a certain, um, the park benches on Scottsdale Road are, everyone is on artistic statement, at every bus stop. Um, they're, they're, uh, stone, they're, uh, sculpted metal, uh, furnished, uh, some of them have ceramics in them, they're all, I, I mean, it's stuff, stuff you do for public improvement.
Change more, more often than every fifteen seconds.
No.
It might violate our electronic.
But that's western art, that's all western art, you see a lot of that out there.
Well, let's do it in Midwest.
Yeah.
Um, Jeremy.
Yeah, this, I'm not a particular fan of this, but they could get a conversation going, you know, how different cities have, like, they have a statue of a pig, and so somebody will paint the pig, and another company will paint their pig.
I don't like that, yeah.
I don't like it, but, you know, if it was something, it was something.
We had the lion.
Yeah.
A lot of it. And people raise money and.
We should have deer.
We had two, two in our city, but it was more of a regional issue.
Yeah.
Chicago's had the cow. Why don't we try, we could, we could try and initiate something like that, I don't know what animal.
I would, Russian deer.
Deer, yeah.
Was it Rochester?
Deer.
I don't know.
My other, uh, two other suggestions on public art, um, Ferndale, even Garden City, now, Garden City can do this, why can't we do it? They rent their public sculptures from, there's, uh, an initiative, the Midwest Sculpture Initiative. And, and you, you can rent them, um, you don't even have to buy them, and, and, you know, Ferndale, a lot of that art, they have on Nine Mile, it's rented.
Changed.
And then, and they change it, and also, there are some people who decide, well, you know, I really like this, I will buy this and give it to the city, uh, once they see it, uh, rather than, you know, conceptually. Uh, the other thing I think we need to do is, and I talked to Sue about this, is writing in our development ordinance that every, um, any project over a threshold of, let's say, five million dollar development has to have a set aside. So many cities are doing this, a set aside for public art, and if, and if the developer does not wanna put, um, have art in their project, then they put it into the municipal fund. Um, all your big cities are doing it, and, and some, it's a pretty big percentage, you know, two and a half percent, um, I mean, I think actually one percent.
Yeah, well, we did, but they, they, every office building on Southfield Road, um, the Mount Vernon all the way through Ten Mile is supposed to put an art piece on the front. We have some, you know, L T U did this study, and they were gonna make that a cultural art facility, and they wanted, uh, uh, logs for artists, and then they were the neat plant, you know, you never, well, you never went anywhere.
I just wanna think about you, 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 mind you, the communities that create incubators for artists tend to get more support and more activity. And if we, you know, we have, um, I still think, that building over there, um, by the bird, we need to take that house and make it something that, and that would be really cool for an artist, uh, incubator, that would allow artists to come and work and play their art, and have their exhibits there, and when you start that culture in your city, you will just, like, grow that artistic feel for the community. But I, I, I think that in our planning department, instead of us just getting the standard, I mean, find something, like you said, it could be all of the benches will be a piece of art, or all of the lamp posts will be a piece of art, or you can make, there's a certain compliance for major road, but we can stay in our neighborhood, you know, each subdivision can adapt a certain artistic design for that and put in something. And, and that neighborhood association be responsible for, you know, for the place. I just want. Yeah.
The hard down.
Yeah.
It would be a neat art village.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you have the B P W, um, I know they, I believe there's still some classes over there, but, you know, the church is available, cause the future's out of it.
The park next to the Novi Library, on yearly basis, rotates about a dozen pieces of art out, just like you said, the. Now, that's genetic, it's all, it's constantly changing.
They still got the police thing around those, um, bus stations where they busted, uh, glass, um, looks bad.
In California, I went to an art thing, and there were small sheds, all lined up, and each artist had, like, a, like, a, building. And every Friday and Saturday, they had art show. And, and they all served wine when you walked in, you know, and, and it was just packed, and going one to one, and, you know, it took a pretty twelve hundred dollars worth.
Phoenix does, thousands of people show up, and it's all downtown, um, it's called First Fridays, and it's all the galleries, and some of them are really way out there with, um, stuff, but it, I mean, it's art, it's whatever is.
Well, you can't limit it, you gotta agree with what you have to do.
But it's, um, and it's furniture, uh, as well, um, but they do this first Friday thing, tons of people come.
I mean, we could start small over there, I mean, that's really a good idea, um, because we used to have a art, um, that's gone a lot, I don't know, we have to stand for that. We've gotta, we've gotta get the momentum somewhere, because the momentum will just spark.
They have, we have the modern art, modernism art show here, right? Why can't we move that to the front lawn? Get people to see it.
Too expensive.
I guess I've cost too much money, man, to get it to the.
Yeah, yeah.
We did those outside shows, you don't wanna do.
Yeah, and you never know when another nature. Um, oh, I just wanna say another venue that would be ideal for art for me is that plaza, we talked about civilian, why don't we use that plaza? It is a wonderful platform to have to be art exhibit, and we never use the plaza, after we fix it up, we never use it.
We used to, fireworks.
Yeah, we used to.
Oh, okay.
I used it to cut a crime. All right, sustainable thing.
Go our tax base, that's the whole thing, if we don't do that, we're not going.
Why are we saying a sustainable thing?
Go our tax base, that's what our main job is, all this other stuff is nice, but it's not gonna go our tax base.
Have we, I'm curious if there's an update to the Andy Levin stuff, the greening of, uh, how many projects has he?
The pace?
Yeah. The pace.
Gee, I don't know if he's done anything yet.
An update?
We're, Fred.
Yeah.
Um. The pace project? For, for what, pace?
The Andy Levin.
Yeah, I, I know he's, he's working on one deal, he, he's out there beating the pavement, he called me a few weeks ago, uh, one eight hundred law, about a one point six million dollar project, uh, if it comes to the patrician, but they are working on it, and it'll be, June twenty fifth will be a year. Uh, but he, he called me, I know he's on vacation right now, but there is some movement on it, and, uh, we've had other people look at it, a lot of people kicking the tires. Um, it really doesn't work well on deals under fifty thousand, that's the other thing, they've gotta be good sized deals, so.
Okay. Anything else on sustainable thing? All right, moving on.
Oh, I just, I, I just wanna make sure, we start looking at the current city energy, and I think we do the same, getting the always, electrical, we don't have solar on anything that we're using, uh, alternative energy. I just want us to be the leaders, I love those wind turbines, and when you come into the house, it's just such a state, but so many people have commented on that. I want us to be more, um, step up, I wanna be more of a leader of alternative energy.
They're doing that eleven mile road, they make sure, like, T V's had all those experimental things, uh, the latest, depending with it, but they must still have these displays throughout the city, where you can, you know, see them in action.
Uh, L T U partnership?
They're doing great.
He's getting enforcement.
Oh, I'm sorry, code enforcement. Well, we beefed up a number of, uh, of our codes recently, uh, from neighborhood suggestions, uh, really started with unsolicited, and then we followed everybody, um.
I think we could do a better job with changing the community, you know, like I said, the students. Our medium on, on, uh, telegraph rows and the lectures, that have, uh, beautiful paintings from flowers or whatever, and then they can put their plaque on there, just, just like, what's possible by. I think we could do, and even with our neighborhood association, um, I know our staff has disappeared, but we, we've gotta engage them more, we, we, we just have to. Is that flower shop dead on Nine Mile? I think it didn't open.
One of the.
Oh, the one on the south side, yeah, that's closed.
I saw some people in the house.
Yeah, they run at the house, but they're, they're about nine kids.
Yeah, I saw that, and what?
But, uh, the other two, um. Jerry Levin runs Levens, so the, the first one east, uh, she is, she's really doing a lot of work around in that, that neighborhood. She does all the trees at Lear's, for, at wintertime, at the holiday time, um, but she's very creative and active.
Uh, L T U partnership, um, some of us have met with Dr. Margill, and he really, really wants to, uh, take our town gown relationship to another level. Um, he has asked us, um, informally, he's gonna bring something officially, uh, to partner with L T U on a childhood obesity initiative that the university is taking on, and wants us to be, um, supportive of it. And it's really at no cost to us, it's just that we're, we're lending our name to something that, uh, L T U is doing, so this'll be coming up, uh, I think in July, I've, I've gotta give back to Mark, uh, Brute, Brute, Brute.
Yeah. Generalist.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I know they've got several other, other things, at the same time, um, they would like to see us, um, make sure that everything we put out that we mentioned, L T U, um, for instance, those magazines that we've advertised in Oakland County, or, um, Metro Detroit Living, we, we buy a page, and other communities, um, like Rochester, Auburn Hills, put down Open University as their logo, ours is Black Bat.
We should put all of our universities on there, I would like all of them, I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna be the city of education.
The point was, it, it wasn't done, and, um, L T U pointed it out to us.
But I, I wouldn't want it for them, I mean, I think we've got O T C, we've got all these other, you know, that's, that's huge, and we should, I think, initially.
Just along that line, I know this summer, they're launching their international village concept, as their international students are growing, what they're doing is inviting the parents of the students to come for a two week period, to put them up in their dorms, and they have events, um, travel to Henry Ford Village, or go to the Tigers game, and we should.
We should get involved.
We should be involved in that somehow.
They have a.
Making sure that.
At least there are one, one event here that we invite all these foreign students, uh, parents, because they're future kids, they're future business connections.
That one, that one time that didn't pan out, but that one boutique hotel, at least when the guy stopped in, his son is attending Lawrence Tech, and, uh, those are opportunities, um, and that might be a way of.
I think, uh, whatever we come up with, and we do need to, I think we need to come up with, with something, and to me, a partnership is not a one time thing, a partnership is year round. We've got to come up with something that engages L T U with the city year round, and I don't know whether it's our campus, you know, letting them, you know, sponsoring, or, you know, letting them have their, some of their activities on our campus, the softball, maybe use our, of course, work off league or some, you know, something that, uh, of course, that's not all year round, but it's, it's a long term, it's a long term.
Yeah, but they are, since they've added their sports programs, they've run out of athletic space.
Yeah.
They need even practice fields, so they're not putting so much wear and tear on their, their soccer field, and so those, I think there are opportunities for partnerships there.
I think so. And, and that gets the young people, all their age in the, the city.
I, I think, I agree with the gentleman in Frazier. I think we need to really stand what partnership means. And not do a hodgepodge. If we could sit down and meet with them in a marquee room. Cause when I talk to the president, he wants to make South feel like an Ann Arbor move in here, move them to Ann Arbor. And that's a pretty big statement to make. So, I don't think we should just take it lightly. I think we need to have a meeting with his, his board. And those people that can make the decisions and those council meetings, but not, no offense, not you go over there, not, not the planner go over there. Let's, let's make a concerted effort to really establish a partnership.
We're, we're doing a feasibility study on a school pharmacy. And trying to do a. I was talking to the president and, and some dealers who wanna fund it.
I think we need to have a meeting.
Drug, drug companies that wanna fund it.
I think we need to have a meeting.
And, uh, but there's four in the state of Michigan and right now they're trying to see if the, the need is there. But under the Obamacare, they're saying there's gonna be all kind of needs. You go to Target, you can't get anything between twelve and one and after seven. There's one girl back there.
You gave me my assignment tonight. Take the beer.
That should go to Jim. He's our administrator.
That's Jim's target. I knew it. Mother of the.
I think that maybe Jim should take.
I'm not telling the president if I can invite him over. Can I set the agenda? It's, it's, I'm not.
You chaired the meeting and set the agenda, but the city administrator runs the city and does what I want. I'm just talking about establishing order because I think we are.
First of all, they contacted me on behalf of all of you. Okay. So, it's, uh, when I'm sharing what, what, um.
That may be fine, but I still think the administrator needs to be asked this.
Okay, I'll source that. One, um.
Yeah, I wanna get some clarification. We're just jumping off of this. Can we get a consensus?
I'm gonna ask them, uh, I will ask Jim to telephone meeting and have a, um.
To discuss partnerships.
Yeah, and, and the international cities. And the obesity thing. They have asked.
That's what you should do. The cities that have a international village.
Chuckle at L T U up. You could have similar joint meeting like you'd have with other sports communities and then they could. And then if we had something else we had to do, we could, you know, meet at five and then do our stuff.
International what?
International cities.
International.
International village. It's where they have, they have so many foreign exchange students, they bring their parents. Already got to travel on D C. And then other, other. Joint use of athletic fields was one.
Yeah.
I'll type it up. All right, I'll source things.
The only, the only one that was initially mentioned was assessing and there was two in favor and two against. But, um, that was a topic that council brought up, this council.
Well, there's a lot of things we can outsource. We can outsource payroll. We can outsource the operation of our golf courses. We can, most cities, there are very few cities that actually use pay employees to manage their golf courses. Unfortunately, Pontiac's emergency manager put it up for sale, his golf course. I don't wanna sell ours, but I don't think we should be using our city employees.
We're right in the middle of a, of a study right now.
To cut our lawns. That's, we've now much healthcare and everything we're paying for people to manage the lawns. And, and also, um, the, uh, the payroll, what's the, oh, our, um, building department. And, uh, that's one that, um, as our department's strength and our partners are becoming a major, a multifamily building. It's becoming a major issue and source, and I would.
Auto inspections could be outsourced.
Yes. Yes. So, there's a number of things and we, we need someone to help us navigate through that, Jim. And I don't, this is one I don't think you should take on, but I think you should find the resources that can advise us and help us navigate through that. Because there is a cross and a minus every time you start talking about outsourcing. And then there's the, the issue that you are always very sensitive to. If you outsource, do you mean layoffs? I don't see it as a layoff. I see it as a moving resources to other places in the city. I don't want anyone laid off. I just, we cannot continue with this scale down department. And payroll is something that multitude of corporations are outsourcing. And it, there's municipalities. We say ours is very unique. There are some, some corporations that are five times larger than us with a lot more complexity and they are outsourcing their payroll. I just fill that out. But you, you know, but then the analysis will tell us, is it, will it work or will it not work?
One of the things you gotta be careful of is, you say you don't want layoffs. Neither do I. But if you're paying somebody to do building inspections, if you're paying somebody to do the building department and we outsource the building department, that's an added cost. If you keep those people and move them someplace else, you're still paying them. So, you've just added cost to your budget without, even though you.
But I think we're at the point in that we're gonna have to hire and do something. Because we have some gaping holes in our organization and, and our people have, have carried the water for a long period of time. And the retirements are continuing because we're an older workforce here. And this is the time to look at.
Yeah, but that's, that's different, that's different. If we're, if the plan is to add more people, then adding people and outsourcing go together. But keeping people and outsourcing, kind of both, that's what we're doing.
But when you outsource, you're eliminating the cost of retirement because, say for instance.
Very nice, because you're keeping them.
Say for instance, something needs to be done, as we talked about a lot, with our controller, treasurer, payroll, all that. So, somebody needs to be hired or shifted or something. So, there is an opportunity. Do we outsource payroll? Because you're gonna have to fill that position in. We are saying that we want rental inspections. We do not, right now, if we call the building department down here and say, show us the last inspection and show us recyclers. It's not gonna be for our purposes because they, they just don't have the manpower. But we're, our expectation is that we want them, we want it done. And, and you're right, we gotta look at the numbers. We gotta look at, if we do that, how does it look? But I don't think we should not look at.
Oh, no, I think we need to look at.
But you're right, there, there.
Well, just keep one thing in mind, when you outsource things, you have to have somebody in house.
I agree.
Who's gonna oversee that contract to make sure they're delivering.
I agree.
Uh, you just can't.
I agree.
Send it out somewhere.
Oh, I agree. I'm kinda disagreeing with that.
But, you know, in defense of the mayor's position, you're right, you have to do that, but it takes fewer people to monitor than it is to have staff do the work.
I'm, I'm, we all.
I, and you're, and I appreciate the inquiry.
Yeah. Okay. Um, succession planning.
Have one. Yeah.
Yeah, we need a plan.
The actual plan is do one.
And, uh, the mayor just said it. Uh, we've got to start hiring some people for some key positions.
The time you have a plan when you don't have anyone's, uh, retiring.
We need a plan.
We need, we need, um, structure of government and weaken a force. And what does that look like? Because our organizational charge is a government that we can no longer sustain. So, we need to have, and then we can go to the succession. We can go to looking, how are we gonna outsource or whatever? Until we get there, everything will remain with us. Because what we have on record, on the paper now is our city government, we cannot sustain.
Anything else on succession planning? The rest of these are, uh, one, one votes. Do you wanna go through them quickly or do you wanna?
I definitely.
Next one's huge. Rose got one.
Yeah, yeah, these are the ones, to me, I should have been the priority.
Yeah, but you were the vote.
All right, let's just go through them quickly then.
The, the Northland Mall and the D D A. I don't know how stronger I can say this. We're frustrated, all of us are frustrated with Northland. We're frustrated, uh, that Greenville Road was an embarrassment for the city. Um, we're, we know that's our challenge part of the city, but because of the D D A, we kinda like, that's the D D A's problem. Instead of, it's city problem. It's a reflection on us as a city. When you enter into Eight Mile Road into South Hill, that is South the city of South Hill. The beautification, you're talking about entrance markers. That's where, that's the gateway to our city. North, um, I mean, uh, the lodge, Greenville Road, and we need to step up and, 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 and be just as passionate about the city center area that everybody talks about because it's sexy and it's, it's, it's got all kind of money behind it. And be just as passionate about the Northland D D A area. I don't like when people say you don't get to South Hill until you pass, um, Ten Mile, Eleven Mile. That is our city. And people say that. And it's our own residents, some of our city people say it. Oh, that's not really South Hill. You don't really get to South Hill until you get to Ten Mile Road. And there's people at this table, they don't even talk about it. All they do is. And the thing that frustrates me is that we criticize it as if it doesn't belong to us. I hear neck, oh, Northland, I don't go there. I don't, you know, I don't like that place. Well, Don, you're elected official and it's your, it's yours. What do you, what do we, what do, what's our plan?
You have to come down on those people that own it.
I was just about to say.
That's what we need to do.
You don't have a D D A group there that knows what they're doing and they have no pressure. They elected me, Tom, can you act?
But, but, John, John, there we go.
But, but I'm saying it, but I'm saying this truth.
But at the end of the day.
I don't need them.
I'm changing them. At the end of the day, at the end of the day.
What? I disagree with you.
Well, let's follow me. I didn't disagree with me, but I'm telling you, I would, with, with, I had an army task force. That, that, if I seen Jim's Kroger, we did it over here on Ten Mile Road. We had a team that met and they went and paid a visit. The city team. Tobin was on that, Rose was on that, I don't know who else was on. Ibearish was on that. We sent them over to have a talking to. They said, do you like to stay open? We'll find some way to close them. Simple as that.
But that was a city team, Don.
Well, but, I mean, they should have a team down there that.
But Don is the city team. If we care about it, then we assemble a city team, bring in the D D A. We should not sit here and allow blight to go into our city and say it's the D D A's fault. We are a city.
Yeah, let me, let me tell you what the mentality is. D D A is there, you put them there to run the place. All right?
Well, you put them there for economic development.
And you, and you.
Economic development.
You gotta hold them accountable, which we don't do.
Economic development, Don.
What?
If that Kroger is unacceptable, just as passionate as you was about Ten Mile, you should be just as passionate about the Greenville Road and get, get all those people you named and go to that store just like you did on.
I tell you what, I'd get rid of that bus stop over there and I'd get rid of, and that's either give those people time to straighten that place up or walk.
And do you know they have a whole plan to straighten that up? Do you know about it?
They, they, they pouring money out of that. They're getting all these people who pay cash. Yeah, I mean, they make more money up in these trash dealers in that place than you can count. And as long as they're making money on these, these guys, they leave them there.
Why don't we tell them?
When you go to Northland, those shops there.
Oh, yeah, the mom and pop shops.
They're not mom and pops, they're all thieves. I mean, they, they don't, they deal in cash. They deal in cash. They cycle off the top and they, and they do their thing. And then you go door to door. The only one you got is bases. There's only an honorable one, I think, you gotta hold on that.
And they're on a watch list.
Yeah. I'd move them across the street myself. Needing a hundred thousand square feet.
Corporate wise, they're, they're on a watch list and if they don't perform, I think they get a year.
I mean, that's a specific one. Well, the people that own Northland are known as strong landlords and they make more money by losing, by not doing it. I don't know how we get rid of them.
Close them up.
Why don't we do that?
Then it's fine, I'll find a hundred ways to close them up.
The guy was at our meeting, we had a, this joint meeting and, you know, we said, well, what is your plan for Northland? Oh, well, we're looking for a big anchor. Well, what are you doing to get a big anchor? Oh, well, we're looking for one. You're gonna find a plan. I think we need, we need to be on.
I think really that they're making more money by write offs. They don't, they're strong landlords that own that. I mean, they are.
Well, they didn't turn around somewhere else that they were talking.
No, no, not here.
I mean, you know, I had Cone, when Cone owned that thing, this image brings the frontier league over there. So, the five thousand seat ball field in towards Tower fourteen. They were gonna take a back to back stop and it was gonna be a thing right to the, right to the home, uh, the food court. And it was the most beautiful plan you ever seen. You know?
Let me share.
They dropped it. They dropped it.
John, uh, let me share. There is in, in Jackson, Mississippi, a mall that's a million square feet. There was the King, that was on the edge of the city. All the infrastructure ran through it. It, it was identical. And a doctor bought it and he got the University of Mississippi Medical School, he got the C, CDC, he got the local hospital. And now a million square feet of a mall is now all medical use. And, and, and I'm going down there and look at it. And I've talked to them and I've got some people interested in it. But we've gotta find a way to move this person. We can't just sit here and say they're a strong landlord.
Well, thirteen million dollars, probably should have bought it. The same way that Beaumont bought the corner of Thirteen Mile Road and, and, uh, Woodward Alley.
But if we have a plan, they may buy it.
Yeah.
They are making money by, by running it like the way they are.
They're ready to sell it.
Yes, um, I think we, we, uh, would be, uh, wrong if we didn't, uh, talk about the property where the hotel is. Instead of being reactive. We tend to be reactive instead of proactive. And what we need to do, we're talking about the D D A. We need to figure out what we really wanna do and make plans so when that comes down. Cause we've talked about having, uh, businesses along Nine Mile Road, ran along the front each. And, you know, Old City Community College having the backside of it. But let's, if we're gonna do that, let's do it.
Not our piece, get a piece of, yeah.
Yeah, D D A sold, um, to Open Community College.
Right.
Maybe they will.
No cost.
Yeah, but I think if we think that it's appropriate to put commercial or, or.
I agree with you.
Retail along the, the, uh, slip front, let's plan.
But, but let me, let me just say this to you, Larry. There's something that we're not doing right. And, and, and I mean, it's not just Northland, but look at that, that center over there by St. Beat's, that shopping center. That's a pig pen. It's a pig pen. And, and.
Oh, yeah.
And you know, it sits there and that guy's bleeding it. He doesn't give it, think for.
Thought it was going away.
Really, and it was. Well, he never took care of it when it's there. I was just going to write it off, you know? And he's got nothing left.
Yeah. The watch man's door.
The watch man's gonna move across the street.
Oh, is he?
And if he told me.
Yeah, I can say, thank you.
He was supposed to be a Walmart.
Who bring him over here?
I was waiting for that. He was supposed to be a Walmart. He would have a beautiful redevelopment, but, hey, you know.
I thought he went home. I thought he went home.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm...
That's pretty bad. Well, apparently we lost, uh, and I heard two different stories about the LA Fitness. And they've announced a six million dollar investment in Michigan, it's in Crane, uh, but it's not Southfield anymore. Uh, and something about, uh, a letter of intent was in, filed in a timely fashion.
And everybody's pointing fingers at everyone. It is a clear breakdown of communication. Because when the city said, when this council said they wanted to be in charge of the development, so the DDA yielded to the city, the city saying that was the DDA's responsibility. It was a clear breakdown, but at the end of the day, we disengaged ourselves from the potential development. And there's enough blame for everybody.
You're talking about, like, that now?
Yes.
Nobody wanted them to come in yet.
Yes, but we didn't communicate. And everybody's pointing their finger at everybody else. At the end of the day, we lost the potential development.
Well, I'm not sure really what it is.
I don't either. I, I'm just frustrated that we lost it. But we are, we...
But back to Myron's point...
But we are, we got a new cliffhanger, and, uh, we're gonna do a conference call with, uh, with them tomorrow, hopefully.
Who? How I said that?
Yes, with, uh, we're gonna try to bring the, uh, the president of the state, regional CEO, whatever, like, to the site. Because he hasn't physically been to the site, he's just had his minions tell him. So, we're gonna try.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I, I feel compelled to comment. You need to know when you can deliver the land. One of the issues with LA Fitness is they wanted to break ground late summer. And we don't even, as of four o'clock today, have a complete timeline on this demolition. We're talking in the spring. I think the marketing on this land started very prematurely. And I also feel very compelled to point out some conflicting goals. Council has said, we want to break even. Well, break even means you're selling this piece of property for about two point, two, two, two point one, two million, two point one million dollars. The LA offer, uh, was way, way light, about one five at best. So, if, I, I think if there's a phone call tomorrow, at least know when the building's coming down, because the conversations in December, they wanted to break ground this fall. And this is a process. You wanna be able to deliver the site clean and the building down. I'm not aware of any calls tomorrow, Mayor, and that's fine, I don't need to be part of them. However, I'm just pointing out some of the conflicting goals I've heard. Break even, sell the property for a million and a half, you know, so I think your staff needs some direction. Which is it? But before you begin the marketing, you...
Instead of take some ownership and, and say, look, this is where we're at, but we never heard that. So, instead, we heard all this stuff afterwards when the, when the deal went.
No, I, I could tell you, I was on the phone, and we repeatedly told LA Fitness that we did not know when this was coming down. When we had the conference calls in the DDA office, you know, we told them we still needed to work out the timeline. I can't, you know, we can't bring a purchase offer to city council when we don't know when this building's coming down.
Well, there's a timeline on that, is there a timeline yet?
Why do we know?
You gotta have asbestos removal.
We, we were on a conference call today, and that's one of the things we're still asking for.
Yes, sir.
I think it should, what's the electrical, the...
The electrical piece is being cleaned, life will be fast. But they're, they're, they all carried coming for a work plan for the asbestos abatement, which gets filed for the, uh, ten day notice, that's a sixty, we're being told a sixty day process just for the asbestos abatement. Uh, but today at the four o'clock, we were asking, give us a timeline.
Well, while we're talking about people's property, whatever happened to Grand Stock, I saw in Southfield. Didn't they, didn't they approach you, Brennan?
Yes, I had my people approach me.
Yeah?
They've done them to you.
Anything happen with that?
I, I mean, we probably had a half a dozen developers that called. And we passed them on to, um, Archdiocese, uh, property management people, we don't own it.
I, I understand that.
And, and they'll come in and they'll ask, yes, not what...
No, no, what I'm saying is, has anybody heard anything?
Not recently, not recently. And when, after Walmart, we had a flurry of activity, of interest. We sat down with what the potential zoning is, but we said ultimately, here's the contact person for Archdiocese. And we have not heard any follow-up on any of those leads.
And that is the history of that problem?
Uh, somebody wants to come in and offer nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
And Archdiocese says, no, that's, you know, we, we had X amount, or we need this amount. So, some, some of them are just lowball, you know, maybe I can get it for a dime.
They think maybe they're desperate, I don't know.
And anything has to, has to go through as a rezoning, so, you know, we lay out what the process is.
Yeah, I had three that came with a whole site plan of what they wanted to do. Send them to him, because they wanna know what they're doing. And he talked to them about the zoning, and go to Archdiocese, and then...
Yeah, why don't we go to their, their, I mean, I mean, you know, I mean...
What the Archdiocese has said to me, and Jeff, is we do not want to be developers. We do not want to sell this off in several parcels. We're looking for one developer to come in and buy all the property and do it themselves. That's what they want.
And what's that million dollars?
Whatever the, whatever the going rate is.
I thought they dropped the price.
It was high.
It was higher than that.
It was?
It was like eight million, seven or eight.
It was eight billion, and they went down.
The, the price on the Ramada credit is about a half a million an acre?
Three hundred is what the appraise, the best appraisal.
So, you're, you're getting arranged, uh...
Right, three, three hundred...
Depending on where you are, you're getting...
When, when Acquest did the appraisal on the Eastern Ridge piece, they were hard pressed to support three hundred thousand an acre. In the, in the peak of this, the Southfield market, you were hitting four fifty, five fifty an acre, and that was ten years ago.
Why don't we get an appraisal of that property?
Of which property?
The, the Saint Bees.
How many acres, Terry?
About ten acres.
Three?
Three million to five million, that's...
But, Terry, I've heard the last couple of weeks, three, four times, Kensington Church.
I'm not aware, we've not heard any of that.
Want to build that?
That with, uh, a couple of, with an outlaw Applebee's, I've heard that repeated, I've heard that twice now.
What church?
So...
Kensington, the big church from Troy.
Applebee's was interested, Applebee's was interested in the site where the going crowd was interested.
It's like a word, it's like a word of faith, it's real good.
Actually, I heard that, you know what, I heard that in Mackinac, that's where I heard that.
Actually, as you recall, a couple council meetings ago, Culvers and the storage have tied up that property, and they're doing their due diligence. So, at this point, they've got control over that potential redevelopment of the site.
As long as they can get two thirds of the people to own it.
That's right. I, I know, but that's, that's an issue.
Yeah.
I don't mind Culvers, I don't want that, that storage, yeah.
But, but it's a new point now, because since that time, we found a deed restriction that prohibits any type of restaurant.
On the, on the Culver and...
Going back to the nineteen forties or forty's.
Cold, 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 they couldn't build anything.
Right, right, and private use, but hasn't, hasn't it expired?
No, there's no termination.
This is kind of important.
There's a deed restriction on, uh...
There's a restriction on that piece, sorry.
That works in Southfield.
Office, office education.
Have you heard anything?
So, that's why Apple, that's one of the reasons Applebee's walked away. Because they tried to meet with the group, and they were like, oh, we're not gonna approve this, and so...
But the letter that it got was from, was it?
Right.
Shell Stanley? It said, you guys screwed up another corner, so we're walking, we're never gonna build anything in Southfield again.
Right. Well, how do you change something like that?
Well, I've, I've had discussions with the attorney, so, I mean, you, one of the things you do is you can go to court, and you can, with, with, for the Culvers and self-storage, and you can go to court and argue, change circumstances. At the time those deed restrictions were, were put in place, you know, maybe Southfield back in the nineteen forties was a dirt road or something.
It was.
Right, so, but initially it was residential, it was changed in like nineteen sixty-seven, I think, to allow the office on that piece. So, you'd have to now...
They changed it once, they changed it again.
Right, right. But, you know, he, they're trying to decide, should they go to the neighbors and try to voluntarily work out something? Then they had kind of thrown around, should we come in and try to get a rezoning contingent out of getting the approval? So, they're kind of struggling with which do they, which do they target first, so...
They should go to Light Industrial, like we have done. They should have, that, uh, that's not a proper place.
That's one of, that's one of the...
Oh, no, it's not, no, it's not, no.
That's not one of the...
It was office and education use on that piece where the, the restaurant would have been, so...
But I'm talking about the storage place, now they wanna come and build that storage.
Right, that wouldn't be allowed either, it's office education, I don't think, that, that would be, that'd be, yeah.
But then they're cutting it up.
That, that, that was just as an option independently, came in the day after Culvers.
It's a recent call, he's representing those guys.
It was gonna be a buffer, because it was supposed to be a buffer to the residents to help, help sell the restaurant.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I just want to add one more piece on the OCC. My last conversation with Doug Smith, Acquest, that's a real estate entity representing the community college. The discussion was the college buying the property for what we have in it for demolition, and figuring out how to compensate us for the lost increment on taxes of some sort. The number we were ratting around was two and a half million dollars, and the dialogue was something to the effect, look, we sat in meetings, well, you folks were gonna buy the hotel for six to seven million dollars. You were never able to put the deal together. The deal finally comes together to create, to give the city an excess payment for lost taxes, uh, has some merit. And just so this is no mystery, there's also been discussion with them, Don, about, uh, a grant to straighten Rutland Road out.
OCC needs some, some love and care, and I, I don't know how to make them happy, they are very happy now. Oh, because they want that, right? They want to renovate it as well. Yes.
And they have always said they would take us home. And now I'm pushing the bar and saying, look, we'd like to see something mixed-use, something creative. And if you could figure out how, you know, something to pay for our lost opportunity, I'll call it a pilot or some... I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna call it a pilot, because when you use that term in agreement, it means you're gonna share the money with all tax jurisdictions, and that's not what my intention would, or my recommendation would be.
But they want to live in the basement shop.
I thought we were gonna keep, or try and keep the nine mile frontage of it.
They, when you talk to them, as Mayor said, they... They want all of it, I mean, they did. Um, and staff has also prepared a brownfield plan for this site. We haven't moved forward on it, but we have a draft of a brownfield plan that in the next week will probably have Miller Canfield do a review.
Did you do a brownfield on Saint Bees?
You could, if you...
How much would that save at the office?
Well, it would...
I don't know how important it is.
It was dependent, it was a tiny entity, but you could.
But we need to have a plan. We're either gonna do it or die.
No, here's, here's the problem. You need to decide who's doing the negotiating here.
That is the issue.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Jim.
If it's Fred, then it's Fred. Okay, if it's a group, then it's a group. Uh, but we, we have to get a strategy because it's been, you know, the, and that's, that's what causes it, you know, maybe, maybe something Fred threw in the mix, they are chewing on, or they don't like a piece of it, and the mayor might come in, and then she gets some, you know...
Well, Jim, they're whipsawing us. When they, when they talk to me or talk to Al, then they call them Mayor. That's, that's classic whipsawing.
Yeah.
And they're, they're, you know, so we need to have...
We ought to be smart enough to say, I'm not gonna answer that question, you need to go to Fred, or...
I, I don't answer the question, I, but I'm getting both sides, and the frustration is on all of us. So, we, we, we don't have a process. And the reason why we don't is because this is a new development. The DDA's property usually was handled by the DDA. Now that this changed, the council said because any property is being sold, we never sold or had properties sold, but the council said we want to make that decision. Well, if the council has that decision, does Al sit back and wait for the council and, and the city administration? Or, and they're calling Al, because Al is the chair of the DDA, he can't tell the city what to do. And then the city has this process, and, and how long does that take? And so, it's just, it's just spinning.
The DDA was not the recipient of the land.
How can we, we, uh, get that?
Because, no...
You're correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's why we didn't solve it.
No, the reason why you're a mom, because you own it and change the process and said anything...
Are we keeping the nine miles strip or not?
Yeah.
No, that property came back to the city.
And it's...
That property still...
It's also important that we get, that we be made whole. Is that, is that your first...
So, it's, right, right. The money, the money is coming from where?
Right.
That's where it came from. This is money...
That's money, yeah.
We need to, we need to keep it...
Oh, I, I should try to...
Is there anything left?
There's, yeah, there's still a balance in there.
But the, the problem that you pointed out is very similar to the problem with council. We made an agreement that when we get emails, we aren't gonna individually reply to whoever sends us an email. We agreed to that, and yet we do.
I was gonna say, you do.
Yeah, no, and we shouldn't, but it seems like every, every agreement we make is disappearing anyway.
Well, this evening, can we get a, a consensus on two things, um, that we want, either we do or we don't want to be made whole, or either we do or we don't want to retain the nine mile strip?
I think it's premature for us to make that decision right now. I think we need to have someone tell us the positives and negatives of, of...
Alright, well, then, then you're right, so...
Is there a way?
But the thing is, if we don't feel some direction, it's not gonna happen next week, then we're off for a couple of weeks, and then, you know, it's, it's lost again.
Yes.
Um, that, that's all my concern.
Yes, we need to assign it to someone to bring us back.
I have a bunch of losses to get out of.
One other twist on this, and that's...
Chancellor Miller...
...pick up on something else.
Has talked about with managed care, and we still don't know where Obamacare is gonna take us. What he's, what he isn't, what he's described to Al and Shelley and I, Mayor, you maybe have heard this, doesn't like to talk about this problem, but this vision of Oakland County and the hospital having a facility where the first floors, a service entity for people who naturally receive their managed care. Someone like, Mayor, I think you're describing in Jackson, um, Mississippi. And then the second, the upper floors being classroom. When I look at something like that, when I talk about why I want to put the brownfield plan on it, an entity like that would most likely be owned by a group of physicians. Maybe part of it's a nod for the hospital, part of it's a group of physicians, and there'd be teaching. There is a possibility for mixed use, and the drawings that we did on the LA Fitness, we literally took their, their candid foot, their standard footprint, and we just did outlaw developments. That could still happen, but we haven't been able to get the chancellor to get out of wanting full control. And this is, I go back to, I think Terry articulates very well, about when you try to bring mixed-use partners together, it's just so difficult, because everyone's got their box or their footprint that works.
They have that formula that's successful, and they don't like doing something that takes them out of their comfort level when they have risk capital involved.
You know, so, in some ways, it's a shock to the house.
So, Mr. President, can I ask a...
We're gonna request for the city administrator to come back with a, um, some data, uh, and a recommendation...
Recommendation.
On, on this property.
Yeah, but I want a date certain. So, if we're coming...
I agree.
Next seventeenth, we have a meeting?
Yeah.
By the seventeenth, we wanna know who's in charge.
No way.
Well, that's a regular meeting.
Regular meeting, we've got like twenty-five minutes on the seventeenth. We're, we're gonna, here's what I...
No, 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 you're missing what I'm saying. I'm only saying to find out who's gonna negotiate and with who. I mean, from what I hear around here is that everybody's dealing with somebody, and nobody knows what the amount of money is, and so this thing's way up here somewhere. And I'm saying is, the only way you can bring it down is to come out and find out who's gonna be negotiating for the city, and what is the price that is on the table? who's gonna be negotiating for the city, and what is the price that is on the table to negotiate with. And that's it. I mean, cut your losses and get the heck out of the project.
And I-
You know, if OCC, I used to tell Sue, if OCC expands like I think they will, that makes that whole place explode.
Yep. And that's what they, that's what they want.
Your apartments and everything else is gonna fill up. That's what it did in Royal Oak.
Yeah, I'm only saying, we either do it or don't do it.
Mm-hmm. But I just wanna to keep the line of communications open, so if there is an offer, it's that the administration's just gonna say no, and, and you don't know that there was an offer on the table.
All right, how soon can you get back?
But when you say-
Well, first of all, this is an information, is there a discussion going on?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
With LA Fitness?
LA Fitness.
Okay, well, let's see what, let's see what their offer is. It's somewhere near two million.
And we, we squeezed out-
Yeah, we have to have a time, they started really according to Fred. Fred doesn't have a timeline on when he's gonna get it.
We can get an estimate from Howie of when it'll be done, and it'll be close.
Our last meeting with him, he was talking spring of next year. I'd like to push that off.
I thought he was talking about, right, October, like the building would be done, maybe all the renovations.
He wants to leave the, the pad, and LA Fitness wanted that thing, engineering ready, green. You know, they, they don't want anything left.
Where, where are they, where are they looking?
LA Fitness. They were talking nine mile, the, the Western League piece in front of the college. No, yeah, no mixed use, just their building.
Let's get clear here, we can get clear right now. Mayor's talking tomorrow, what's our number? Okay, our number to break even is around two million.
Two, two million, two one.
Two million's the number.
And when we, and when we first started with LA Fitness, we were, we were in the, in the one five, one eight range, so.
Well, they're close.
No, Jim, no, Jim, their, their numbers still align. You know, I, we, it took a lot to get them up to million OCC.
Oh, millions, two million OCC.
There's a good spread in the numbers.
What?
Because they said because of what? You know, we were talking, you know, I want-
One eight, one nine, one seven.
Because, you know, if we get some taxes generated from this property-
Right.
You know, the city, I mean, it may not be immediately, but I just, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with saying, absolutely, we gotta get this number, if we don't, we just don't, we're gonna, we'll be, we'll be like that size.
Okay, so what's, so what's our number for now? Anything close to two.
Oh, you've got a lot of numbers.
But, but then do you go back to the college, seven, two five, and thirty days, or?
I guess so.
Yeah.
That's how you play.
In a negotiating position.
Do you wanna make money on it?
Be green. Okay.
Well, the opposite is to get it down, and there's a land, and put on the market, I don't think-
That's why we turned the first to get rid of that.
Office.
A year ago.
I mean-
Well, if LA Fitness takes a piece of, along the front, does that freeze out OCC?
Yeah, they want all of it. We, with the LA Fitness, we were able to carve out like three quarters of an acre for maybe a Tim Hortons, and that would have been probably fifty, sixty thousand a year in taxes coming in.
They want all of it. Does it have to be personally, or will they take it, will they take it?
Some kind of coffee shop.
No, you're not have some-
I don't, I don't know if they would, because you've had that conversation. I've known that they talked about a possible soccer field until they could figure out they're grown. They have a plan.
No, they don't, they just wanna leave it open. Yeah. I thought it was true.
Well, come back to it, to-
You know, Jim, you, you bring everybody together, you bring in Al and, and-
We'll, we'll sit around the table and figure it out, this is ridiculous.
So we're all saying the same thing, and like you said, who, who's on first, so when there's a call, do I send them to Fred, or do I send them to Al?
On the other hand, we don't wanna be talking about just two years from now.
Exactly.
Been a year.
Been a year, yeah.
But it was so lost the other part, but I did not believe-
You've made progress in a year, you've got demo specs out. Three years ago, you got some of your, it's progressing.
Well, the owner was still paying ninety-nine million dollars.
I thought I was gonna get to push the thing, you know, already by now, that's why.
Yeah, we wanted to-
When did, when did they, when did they give the DDA to the other half, after the?
Million five.
What?
A million five, three hundred thousand per acre.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
And, and this sits on a building, and you're gonna ask for more?
The logic is severely flawed, John, I agree.
So if it's flawed, let's make it logical. Two point five percenting.
Give us an update within a week.
Get out of there.
Pardon me, give us an update within a week.
We'll give you an update within a week.
All right, okay, we gotta move on.
Put a million out of the Greensfield project, and then take it and put it over the Radisson. Tell county to do their own road. That's what I said. Tell them, you've got to build a garden.
Got the government's seventy-two percent of a road.
Yeah, half an hour.
Seventy-two percent of a road from the county, okay?
Today, you said-
I know, and it's been a couple of hours. Five or six years of a road that's working on a teleparty. So figure that out, that's a hundred percent.
Well, it's gonna be today morning, that's the other way around.
And we bought a lot of good will, Don.
It's irresponsible to fix it.
That's great, but you can hammer all you want, guess what?
And the complaint that-
We gotta move on. We're gonna have three or four more. Let's quickly finish this up. Everybody agrees that, although it only got one vote, we've gotta get some better roads. We were gonna have something on a future agenda to talk about, uh, a bond or special assessment or what? Uh, estimate of, of what we're looking at.
That's a whole separate meeting.
That's a whole separate meeting, or is it?
Yeah, we almost have to find out what's gonna happen with Detroit before we talk about bonds.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's so true.
That's true.
And I swear, it looks like we're gonna write down bankruptcy.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I, I don't, is anything else need to be said about roads that we all agree?
No.
All right, maintain strong, strong public safety. I think we all agree on that, too. Uh, rental inspection program. I'm surprised it's only got one, but I need more stickers.
Say, what's on mine?
I didn't vote for it, only because I ran out of stickers.
I, this is something, and Jim, please, I understand how I'm saying this. If we ask, and I would like to ask, for a documented show of how many rental inspections we do, how frequently does rental, private rentals and high-rise buildings are inspected? Because every time we run into one of these bad projects, we say we have the ability to inspect the common areas. But yet still we run into places, and I know that we have some inspections that we do, um, tickets on. We just need to improve, and I think we need to hire someone that can do it. I don't necessarily have to do the numbers, but when you look at it for what I mean that, maybe you can prove me wrong, because with our, our staffing, and when we get issues and we have to pull our building department off on something else, I just, I'm, I personally feel that we're not inspecting at a level that will maintain the quality that we want.
Inspection, inspection ordinance has been written, and all we have to do is bring it back out of the code and without it.
Probably some fine tuning, but, but as good, it has been drafted, it was ready to go years ago.
Big boy's lobby, it's not passive.
And I, you know, I don't even think we need to get in that fight, because if we inspected common areas like we're supposed to, we can identify the majority of the problems, I think.
Well, if they're not putting mine in the common area, they're not putting it in the unit.
Exactly.
I don't wanna go into you. We're finding that with province.
Province.
Exactly.
Soon as you walked in, you were sick.
It's common area.
And you can look at the roofs, you can see it there, not in the repair, you can tell the wires, the elevator.
Oh, yeah.
So if we, I don't wanna get in that fight about, because I really don't want to, you know, there is something to be said about my, my home and my apartment, I don't want you to-
You get, replace that and accept that.
You know, I'm gonna go in your house, too.
I mean, what, what's the ultimate? All you can do is keep writing tickets, okay?
Well, what are we doing, Jim, and that's the thing?
We're hammering these provinces.
Well, we're, yeah, full court present, now, a province place, but obviously there are other buildings that are probably in a similar shape.
And from my point of view, it's also because of the housing crisis, we have more rental homes all across the city.
Yes.
And, you know, we were up at that tax auction, we watched these people buy all these properties, and then all of a sudden, uh, there, there, people are in these houses, uh, and they deteriorated.
Well, that's what the vacant registration program is supposed to-
But is that happening?
Well, it, it, it is, I mean, every month, there's a docket of those cases that are up, but building can only process so many, and it, and it is, it's a staffing issue, it is.
The mayor of inspection.
Yeah, the mayor said that she wants to know how many inspections were made. I don't think that's a problem. I think the problem is, we don't know how many there are.
Yeah.
Right.
And, you know, we had a young lady up here early on with, that's an expert in GIS. Every rental house ought to be on GIS, so that we can, I mean, we can, uh, I don't know, we can pull it up and see how many we do have.
You know, they may be vacant today, and then tomorrow now, they're, they've been flipped.
We can take it off.
There's seventeen thousand multiple family units in the city roughly, give or take.
We're talking about single.
Single.
I'm talking about whole.
Seventeen thousand, almost even.
Right. Then there's another seventeen or eighteen thousand single families.
Right, I think there's, don't we, don't we run about eight hundred minutes on the vacant?
And they have them out. The code enforcement, Jerry's numbers are the best on the vacant homes.
Yeah.
And he inspects the common areas on those vacant homes. Then they turn those over to, to building, and they send a notice out, and I would need to see what that penetration is.
It's about, this in front isn't about eight hundred, a thousand?
Yeah, it's about eight hundred.
And that changes.
Yeah, it changes, but it's-
I, I know that we do not go after everybody who's renting a house here and do an inspection.
We have to disenter.
They're not on a-
Can really do that.
And one way to find out where the tax bill goes.
But shouldn't they be inspected before someone moves in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not happening.
Well, anytime you run out under the rental ordinance on a single-family home, you have to have it inspected.
I would think so.
We have that on the book.
Yes, yes.
But it's not being enforced, and it's a staffing issue. So we're talking about putting money into contracting that as a service.
But you know, I could have lost paper itself.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be on there, right?
Well, you don't want people living in unsafe places, and that's very dangerous.
And we've got some laws here.
I know that, we know that.
Because these buildings went up for foreclosure, these people bought them, never saw them, never looked at them, and they just collect them.
A friend, a church, his friend of mine says, look at, look at this house, cause he, for me, he backs up to the church parking lot, to tell us earlier, I said, uh, it was for sale, and somebody moved in, and then, then a new hall pulls up, and the people disappear. This time they took all the beautiful landscaping out, it's only grass.
Wow.
All, all the, it was all beautifully landscaped, but all the landscaping's gone. And he said, oh, come, they're gone, the landscaping's gone.
Wow.
It's only grass.
Did you read the paper, the one on Berg Road?
It's in Virginia.
No, 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 there, there's one on Berg Road that was in the paper where the people were taking stuff out of a house that was empty, taking the next door, and putting it in that house. And a neighbor said, there's something strange going on, it's that house supposed to be empty.
They got arrested.
And they got arrested, yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Oh, something you need to know, this is, we have a non-quadrant, uh, ordinance in our city. You know how in Detroit, if it's an empty house, you lived it for so long, you can say it's mine? We had a squatter situation in Southfield, and a neighbor called, and the police were able to take him out of that house, because we have a non, some kind of way, we have something where you can't just go and squat and claim a house.
Right, we, we, we would not allow it, right, right.
But, but, you know, in Detroit, you know, that lady, the woman bought the house, and she tried to move in, and the squatter police-
I think that only reflects Detroit, houses that are owned by the city, too. I don't, I don't think you, I mean, they can't give away a private property owner.
They bought it in auction.
Okay.
That's good news, because at least we know that we know squat.
It's late. All right, on that note.
So we're looking for contracting a rental home inspection.
Get out of here.
The last one is protecting houses, uh.
Didn't we just talk about how now with that?
The only way you do that is to keep, keep code enforcement really moving.
Yeah.
I mean, and, uh-
Or neighborhood initiative, or enterprise zones.
Mm-hmm.
Talking about those, uh, sign markers and increased beautification and everything like that.
People will become elusive themselves.
Yeah.
One guy's got five of them lined up, this, that, and the, he can't see the landscaping now.
Oh, the, the community pride thing.
Oh, the community pride.
What was the thing on neighborhood? Uh, enterprise zone. I got enterprise, but there's someone said something. Someone said something about neighborhood.
Sort of like, uh, the markers, like the entering, entryways and community pride.
Community pride.
Yeah, gateways.
I see it on living miles.
All right, and I think we're done.
Thank you.
So what's the next step?
Ken, I've got one other thing. I went down to see the guy, went down to Target, all right? And they busted in there, they drove a car, a truck through the mall, and, and he wants to put, he's got one big pipe from the door, and he wants to put them all along the back, and he said the city doesn't allow it.
Dollars.
And, and, and I don't know who, Mr. Strut, would you check on that? And they stole a Henry Ford medical truck, and went down to his, and go through the gate, and powered it three times, see it all over here, three times over here. And they left a couple of three thousand dollar big guns up on top, that put those, those dental pistols, I think it was twenty-six or something.
Twenty-two.
Something, I forgot how many it was. And they left all the two and three thousand left for them. They're in and out, they had hazmat, I've seen movies of it, they had hazmat, they closed up, and quickly, all the lights, oh. Two guys.
Sounds almost like an inside job, because I understand that the alarm wasn't working.
Yeah. The motion detector didn't work.
What's our next step? Okay, so the next step is we'll type up this report, uh, working with the city administration, and identify initial responsible parties, and then bring it back to the council.
Okay. The gentleman at this, he went by your name with the number of dots. The bottom system probably shows them the jury, they're all going. So maybe that would-
Yeah, the, uh, the chart has the number of dots plus the percentage, so we'll have that on the revision. Some of the, you have a thing. Yeah, because three, this is three dots, seven point five percent. Yeah, because Jeremy put five dots.
We were told we could put as many dots on that, I could have put five dots on that.
You guys took five dots to wait for me.
You had too many dots.
I mean, they weren't letting use of them.
You had twice as much as everybody else.
You weren't letting use of them, you're certain.
I put three on one, and I put two on another.
I had ten actually.
I allocated one.
There was forty given up, forty were voted on, I'd go like that. Everyone had five dots.
I allocated them.
I didn't read mine. No, seriously.
You had two dots.
I had three dots. And I gave them to someone, and we didn't know.
Well, that's like saying I want more money.
We're not trying to, we're not. Come back to Mr. Fraser, trying some announcements.
No, I have two, two questions I want to ask. One is, we were talking about the NSP, and- One is, we were talking about the N S P, and, it's my understanding that when we got the N S P money, that we only had five years, and we didn't use all, we had to give, give the rest of it back, is that right?
Uh, the first part, now we've got another year, so we've got till next June.
Next June?
Yes.
Are we okay with?
Yes.
We got seventeen houses we get rid of, and we'll get rid of them.
And I can tell you, two on Brentwood or under are in production right now, and I've got six more that specs, were just, uh, have, were prepared by a private firm, and are being reviewed by Joe Tomzick, uh, and those will go out to business, uh, probably in the next two, two weeks.
Okay, we got seventeen houses, but they don't want the houses, they want the money. Do we have any loose money that we're not spending?
Who, the, the, the?
The government. The government gave it to us, I thought it was for a five-year period.
Yeah, well, we still have money to draw down from Harvard, in particular, the twenty-five percent set aside.
The nineteen...
And I'll confirm that number, I think combined is about one, one and a half million dollars. We're also sitting on cash in the one accounts is raised around six hundred thousand.
But his question is, do we, are, are we getting, did we, did we get any money that we haven't spent? The answer is no. We didn't get any money we haven't spent.
Are we, are we, my question is, are we gonna turn money back to the government?
No, no.
Because we haven't spent it?
You've actually had about two, twenty-one million in COVID income.
If anything, it'll be the other way around. Okay, we'll be, we'll be a little bit short because of how much we have to put into these houses.
And, and that, with the market coming back, our models changed, 'cause the original performance, we had us breaking even with probably about fifty, sixty thousand. Now that the market is trending in the right direction, we might, I think, we're breaking even.
Okay, all right, as long as we don't turn money back, and, and we're, you know...
We've got a couple, for example, I've got two mortgages that we're carrying in, because people haven't been able to get mortgages, now, so we're quite...
Yeah, there's four, there's four of ours.
That should go to the shoe box, like the real question, that we had, we're getting a little bit...
I don't have a board. Do we have another question here?
Yeah, the other question...
People are not listening.
Yeah, the other question is, it sounds like home, it sounds like home. The other question is, now that Ray Tomzel is gone, this, Mr. Seymour, when you were president, you always made me stop.
I didn't know the meeting was still going on.
Well...
There was so much noise.
Uh, now that Ray Tomzel is gone, who is responsible for purchasing?
Nikki Longton, the ultimate purchasing responsibility is in the administrator's office, you've researched, that's what the charter says.
Well, the code, the code says that the city manager has all the powers of the purchasing agent, so since we don't technically have a purchasing agent, Nikki does the technical part, and Jim overall would be...
Okay, I, you know, uh, that's a real important part to me, uh, you know, make sure the kids are looked at and, and done like they're supposed to and all, and I wasn't, I wasn't sure, I never heard who was gonna take...
Nikki's the, Nikki's a high-level analyst, she knows, she knows what she's doing.
She definitely knows what she's well-seasoned.
Okay, the question becomes, do we need a, do we need a purchasing agent in the exempt range, first of all, that's question one. Question two, is this the purchasing agent need clerical support in addition to the clerical support we have?